Okay, so we have tripled our audience participation and we are gonna get started. I will call the meeting to order and we'll go to roll call.
Okay. Rodriguez, Swift, Green, Fragoso, Kirline, Gonzalez Parber, and Chair Newton.
Has anybody got any changes to the agenda before we hear a motion to approve it? Okay, somebody want to approve the agenda or move to approve the agenda?
I still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimously approving the agenda, I will read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Alright, so we have public comments on non-agenda items. If anyone here from the public wants to talk about an item that is not on the agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. And seeing no one here to talk about things not on the agenda, we're gonna skip past the consent calendar because there are no items on the consent calendar and we will move into the public hearing items. And the first one is a preliminary discussion and consideration of zoning ordinance amendments to reduce the maximum residential floor area. So Ben, you are on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. This item is brought before your commission at the request and direction of the town council. In their 2018 goal-setting workshop, they set as one of their goals to reduce the maximum size, allowable size of houses in Fairfax. And this direction and intent was repeated at their May 2 meeting where they directed staff in the planning commission to take this up despite the fairly quick turnaround between their council meeting and this meeting. No time like the present, so it is before your commission. While on the face of it a seemingly straightforward item, as can be seen from the staff report, there are a number of challenges and issues that must be addressed in considering such a reduction. The real question is what's an appropriate size to set as a maximum house size for Fairfax? It's noted that despite having an ostensible maximum house size of 5,000 square feet, I believe we only have two in Fairfax that exceed 4,500 square feet. So as a practical matter, people generally, or universally, actually four of them, universally don't build large homes. It's noted that in some of the larger parcels that are potentially developable, not even considering ones which are currently under review, that under the town's floor area ratio and maximum size, this could come into question. So regardless, it's before your commission for discussion. Some of the issues that are related to consideration of what is an appropriate size if 5,000 square feet is deemed to be too large would be consideration of what happens with any houses that would be made non-conforming by virtue of size, ones that again, we don't have any that are now non-conforming. As can be seen on the list starting on page six and running into page seven, as you start to reduce the maximum size, you create more and more, it roughly doubles for every 500 square feet you go down. So picking a number, and the council seem to be thinking as far as a general idea around 3,000 square feet. So you can see that if you're considering 3,000 square feet or more, you might be affecting upwards of 72 houses. And as you get smaller and smaller, you create more and more currently non-conforming or what would be currently non-conforming if and when the zoning ordinance were revised to reduce that maximum square footage. Things to note is there are some limitations in the data. When we started working with the county's data sets, for one thing, they typically, well, the information we had on short notice didn't include garages. The county does also not include accessory buildings. And as we know, there may not be that many garages that exceed 500 square feet where any additional square footage for a garage would be counted towards that maximum square footage in FAR. But we do have a lot of accessory structures. So that's one of the questions is, you know, how do we make sure that we provide notification to all property owners? It's interesting because we wanted to make sure that if we were considering something that could affect people's, I guess you could call it property rights, what they'd be allowed to do, what their current status of their homes would be, we felt that we should get our notices out as early as possible. So we did notify all the 72 that came up on the list. Actually, I think we, our first list was a little bit more broad, so I think we noticed 90 and then we subsequently winnowed it down. But we would want to at whatever level of notice, or excuse me, at whatever level of square footage was deemed to be appropriate by your commission, we would want to make sure that we tried to notice every owner of property that might be affected. And so one of the issues is how far below the data that we have should we go? Staff's recommendation is several hundred square feet to account for information that the assessor and the county databases may not have and to just account for things like sheds, et cetera. So that's one of the issues to be discussed is making sure we provide enough notice. Another issue is the town's current regulations in dealing with non-conforming structures for any reason requires a variance. So what would happen is you would take what are now conforming structures by virtue of size and if they required to do anything that increased the discrepancy, and we're talking not even in a demolition sense but in a remodel slash addition, if they wanted to add square footage, they would have to go before this planning commission with a variance. As you are aware, variance findings are pretty specific. It has to be something relative to the property, not to the development on the property. So in theory, it would be very difficult to make findings. So in that regards, it would be a what you have is what you get unless the town were willing to consider various variances for that or to change the regulations and, you know, create exceptions or something like that. But I think if we're gonna seriously explore reducing the square footage, the idea is it's capped at that number. If you happen to have a larger house, that's what you get. That also creates an issue of if somebody is a property owner in a variance circumstance, what happens when they try to sell the home? The first question that a appraiser will ask is if this structure were to be burnt, were to burn down or be destroyed by an act of God or various, et cetera, would they be able to rebuild? Under the current regulations for a destroyed house, our language talks about to the greatest extent possible, it needs to conform to the regulations. So pretty easy interpretation would be no, you would have to comply with the zoning regulations unless they applied for and were granted a variance. So those are the type of questions that would be need, would need to be discussed and I would, staff looks forward to commission's consideration of that issue is how do we address this question about fairness to people who bought their homes, they're currently conforming, now you run into a potential resale and financing situation. There are ways to address that. You could simply provide an allowance to say if you, if your house is non-conforming by virtue of exceeding maximum house size, then you would be allowed to build one for one. So there's, there's language we could do. The council is also believe that some consideration should be made to any property owners whose residences, et cetera, would be, would be now considered non-conforming under any new reduction in square footage. Yeah, so there, in addition to the non-conforming and the variance, there's other language relating to the non-conforming section that's a little bit ambiguous in terms of what the desire and goal is. And I'm not really gonna get into it tonight because I think the focus is, you know, to what extent, whether and to what extent reducing the maximum square footage is the issue. But if we are, if staff gets that direction, we would certainly come back with a discussion about ambiguities and perhaps a language that may, may be internally conflicting or at least at ambiguous with respect to its meaning. And I know Commissioner Swift and I exchanged a couple of emails about some of that language. So that's another issue. In terms of a loophole, if you want to call it that, under new state law regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, it's really accessory dwelling units, somebody whose property currently conformed or would conform with all the other zoning standards, i.e. setbacks, floor area ratio, et cetera, would be able to add on a up to 1,200 square foot accessory dwelling unit with no discretionary review. So it's one of those situations where if you were a person who could afford one of those large homes and wanted to do an addition and not run into a variance or any of those other review aspects, you know, actually add square footage, they would, there would be a built-in incentive to say, I'm gonna build it an accessory dwelling unit, throw in a kitchen, call it an accessory dwelling unit. And this is statewide. Planning staff would be limited to simply looking at, does it meet the parking, or excuse me, the Freudian slip there, of course, parking is always an issue, but does it meet the other zoning requirements? So in a way, it might have a beneficial impact in producing additional accessory dwelling units. In order to get this additional square footage, they're gonna have to create dwelling units, accessory dwelling units. One of the challenges would be, are they really gonna do that or are they simply gonna throw a kitchen in their addition and call it good? We don't know. Anecdotally, that appears to be an issue that is emerging in some of the tonier areas in Marin where people would have to go through design review and, you know, let's face it, that process, it's, it's a discretionary review, there's no guarantee and the current ADU law allows you to avoid that. So in other areas where people have very large homes, they're not necessarily running into square footage limits, they're, they are choosing to apply for ADUs. Whether or not we're adding to the housing stock of different dwelling units remains to be seen. One of the questions that was asked, and I've managed to do a little research, is what's the norm in other jurisdictions in Marin? I basically got feedback from a number of jurisdictions. Let's see, one, two, three, four, oh, this is an old list. Five jurisdictions have no limit on floor area in at least part of their jurisdiction. Several of them do have, if they don't have it in their flat areas, they do have it on hillsides, but Cordero Madera, for example, Ross, they do, Ross, for example, discourages residences of more than 10,000 square feet. The smallest square footage allowed is 4,000 square feet in Novato. However, additional is allowed through designer view. And just driving by Novato on the freeway as you're going up the hill, you can look to your left and see ones that would make that 4,000 square foot limit look like a pauper shack. So they allowed as how, it's not unusual for people to get larger residences through designer view. So the standard in Marin, some of them are Novatos 4, Belvedere, here's another one, 4,850 with exceptions for sizes larger than that. And we've all been on the ferry and seen their, you know, some of their greater than 10,000 square foot houses. So, you know, they, they require an exception, not a variance, if you want to get larger than 4,850. But it varies, several of them are 8,000 square feet. They do regulate it in part through floor area ratio. Some of them have a sliding scale floor area ratio so that the larger the lot, the smaller the floor area that's allowed, which tends to keep the floor area in play as you get into, for example, lots of more than 20,000 square feet or an acre. Cause obviously if you have a 40,000 square foot lot in Fairfax, you know, if you didn't have a cap, that would allow a 10,000 square foot residence with a .4 FAR. That's not an unusual FAR for your base FAR in communities. So in Marin where you have larger lots, you could run into that problem if you're trying to go by the numbers if you didn't have a sliding scale and you didn't have a cap. It's interesting that some of the planning directors that I spoke to said that they are considering perhaps lowering their floor, floor area maximum. So Fairfax may be on the lead edge of a new trend. I'm not sure if they, what they would end up arriving at. So with that, staff is here to take public comment here and hear the commission's discussion and follow up with any research that we may need to do or respond to any direction we may be given and bring it back to the commission at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So do any commissioners have questions of our planning director?
Actually, I do, thank you, through the chair. Could you clarify for me the comment you made about an accessory dwelling unit, whether, did you say that, is that me, that the dwelling, that an accessory structure could be built on a lot with the property already at the maximum square footage and not be included in the square footage count? Because that's the way our zoning ordinance currently reads, but we could change that?
Well, our zoning ordinance is virtually in line with state law. The last, last item on the agenda does talk about some minor tweaks to, to bring it completely consistent with state law. But yes, our current zoning ordinance and state law, it's based on state law, would allow somebody, if they had a house, you could only be 50% of the total square footage, but unless you're talking about reducing the square footage for maximum down to less than 2,400 square feet, you would be allowed to build that full 1,200 square feet provided that you met all the other zoning requirements. So lots, or lot size, setbacks, height, et cetera. But yeah, right now, the state has deemed that in their quest for housing, they're reducing local discretionary review, the ability to say no to housing development and ADUs are one of the ways they've done that.
And so that would be allowed regardless of the floor area ratio of that particular property?
Right now, no. It would have to comply with floor area ratio. There is a bill pending in the state right now that would eliminate floor area ratio. So, you know, they're, they're seeing the objections and the roadblocks and eliminate them, eliminating them as they go.
So I had questions. From what I understand, kind of data-wise, we've got, in town, we've got 237 undeveloped single-family properties and we've got 2,137 developed single-family properties and 270 developed duplexes in town. So when we talk about the 237 undeveloped single-family properties, do we know what those properties can accommodate right now legally?
Under our current, we haven't run square footage calculations on that, but I will say this, that generally speaking, the properties right now that are undeveloped tend to be the more challenging to develop. So our current discretionary application process, whether it's hillside review, design review, et cetera, would probably be more important than a black line square footage calculation. I mean, that's been the trend in applications we've considered since I've been here and likely will continue to be until or unless the state takes away that discretion.
Cause I think that would be, since we only have 237 undeveloped properties, it would be good to know what is buildable on those properties as we look at this. The other thing is, this is a very confusing issue for people. You know, when you opened the, the staff report, you talked about maximum house size. And that's, in the staff report, it says maximum house size. The council talked about maximum house size, but it's not really what we're talking about, maximum house size. If somebody in the community thinks house size, they're thinking, you know, the livable space in their residence. So, and when you provided the statistics, I think those were based just on?
Houses.
House size.
Correct.
Okay. So kind of for clarity, an unfinished attic is part of that? I'm just gonna run down.
My understanding is that square footage as counted by the county is interior, or it's, it's finished square footage. I mean, they're, they're not crawling up into attics and there would be no way to, for the county to make.
Well, I mean, what we count, not this, I mean, that's part of, if I have an unfinished attic, is that part of my floor area?
Not at this time.
Okay, so that's not in there. A basement, anything over like three feet of the walls, I think? Patios and decks on a property?
That's, yeah, that's not interior, so.
But is that counted when we look at floor area?
No.
For, for house size?
No.
Okay. So garages over, space on a garage over 500 square feet, so that could be a little bit over like a two-car garage over that?
Right, typically, well, what happens is sometimes people want to have a little workshop, but yeah, your two-car garage is gonna be up to or about that size and then the third car would definitely put it over that.
Or any space above that, that would be kind of storage?
It would be counted.
Right. So and accessory buildings on a property, so whether that's a tool shed or a home office?
Of any size.
Of any size.
I would also note, yes.
A playhouse?
That's an interesting building code question. If it's considered a non-permanent structure, like one of those pop-up storages, we could dive into the code with the, the building inspector later, but my understanding is it would probably have to be considered a permanent structure although.
Right, so a greenhouse or would a chicken coop do it?
Well, there's some pretty nice greenhouses out there, so I would say that we would look at it, put it this way, when people think that they can avoid town review, they'll call something a chicken coop even if it has, you know, Monets hanging in it. So it would be probably something that we would have to individually review. Let's just say for, for argument's sake though, that if it's there permanently, we would count it.
Okay. So and I'm just mentioning those because I'm getting to kind of the confusion when people think in terms of, you know, that we're looking to reduce house size. They're not thinking, and we, we haven't been real clear so far in presenting this either at the council meeting through no fault of their own or through what we've put out, what is considered a part of that house size that we're looking to reduce.
Right. The staff report contains that information, not to the level of detail that you're talking about, but it talks about garages and accessory buildings. One of the challenges, of course, is that many houses don't have it, many houses that do have the garage or the shed, it's below the, or excuse me, not the shed, but the garage, it's below what would count. So I, I think the general, when you're starting with a general discussion, you would say house size, but obviously really quickly, you'd want to make sure that you somehow factor that in. And that's, that was the part of the staff report that said, if we're gonna send out notices where we're considering reducing it to X square feet, we need to drop it well below whatever that square footage is in, in order to capture people who might be potentially affected. I'm frankly, I'm surprised that we haven't gotten people at this meeting, but maybe there's some, like you said.
Well, perhaps part of that is some of that confusion as well.
Right, but.
And this is the first.
For people who are on county records as having more than 3,000 square foot house, that notice went to them with a little arrow pointing to this discussion with the number that we were talking about. It's probably something that will gain momentum in terms of public awareness. We're already discussing additional noticing next door, things like that, putting it on the town's webpage, front page. But I've been involved with considerations of other zoning code changes that limit people's ability to add on and usually people watch that pretty carefully once they become aware of it.
And you mentioned our kind of discussion on restoration of a damaged structure. So looking at the code for that, if a property is non-conforming, the codes is a little confusing. It talks about a damage that's 50% or less and it just says that the non-conforming use may be resumed provided that restoration started within a year and is diligently pursued to completion. And then section B talks about damage over 50% and that has language that says that to the greatest extent possible, it will be, it will replace one for one. And it talks about the application of variances, so it.
Well, excuse me, clarify that, to the greatest extent possible, it would be made conforming.
Right, right.
Yeah, so it's not a one for one in that position.
Right, right, but the two kind of seem to be treated differently.
Right.
To that, one doesn't speak to greatest extent possible, one doesn't speak to variances. As we go forward, as you mentioned, that's something I think we need to look at, but my other question is when we've had, do we recall when we've had in, in any non-conforming building that may have been damaged 50% or less? How would we have addressed that?
Well, most of the, most of them predated this and the council, they allowed them to restore them to the way they were before they suffered the fire, but they predated this.
Regardless of whether they were at the time conforming or non-conforming?
Right. They were allowed to be re-established to whatever they were before they were damaged.
In essence, okay.
Right.
Okay. And then my last question, when you mentioned you kind of looked at what other towns have as caps, did you get any feedback on San Anselmo?
Yes, I did. And that's on the list that, I made this copy a couple of days ago, let me see, I might have, just going off the top of my head, I think it might be 5,000 square feet, but, oh, wait a minute. San Anselmo, 5,000 square feet for both hillside and flatland areas.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, I just had a, oh, I have just an overall question here about the, the intent of this, of this procedure. What, I read the town council minutes, I took a look at the meetings, I still don't quite get what triggered this or why, I mean, I imagine there's something to do with, we can get more houses on, on, you know, more houses into Fairfax this way by requiring lower square footage or not, not requiring, not allowing larger square footage. Another thing comes to mind is what happens elsewhere in the state where people can buy like two small lots together, destroy both houses on it and build something that's fair. fairly large, and they have a huge problem with this in some parts of the state, because that eliminates, you know, housing. So maybe that's a motivator. I'm just trying to get what the motivation is, and then I have some other comments.
I know for a fact that that combining of parcels to end up with a larger parcel that gives you that much higher floor area ratio, square footage, you know, it complies with FAR, but you end up, and there are other efforts afoot, for example, no net loss, where they would say at a minimum, if you're going to do that, you would have to build an ADU with it. In fact, at a planning director's luncheon this week, there was some specific discussion about how do you make sure it's a legitimate ADU in that case? But yes, that has been a problem. You don't really want to use gentrification in a county where the average home price is north of $1 million, but certainly, there's some character questions, resource questions. From a staff standpoint, you know, the town council took this up, and you as representatives, you know, residents in this community and representatives of the community, would probably be in a better position to answer that question than staff.
Well, one thing...
Phil, you have more questions?
Just, yeah, I did, but go ahead.
Well, no, I'm just wondering if you have more questions as opposed to comments? You said you had more comments, and I was going to hold your comments, so after the public hearing, but if you have more questions, go for it.
Okay. I have a, what are we going to do about notice? I mean, notice went out for this hearing, I expected 90 people here, myself, you said it, I agree. It seems to me, for me, if I got notice of a hearing in the mail, I assume these were mailed, I would be here, whether it's confusing or not. In fact, the more confusing, the more likely I would be here if it affected my property. So that I don't get. So what are we going to do to bring people to come here and discuss with us this project?
Well, what I've observed is next door has a pretty good ability to get people riled up, involved in issues, so we could certainly put out a very brief, I mean, this is the challenge, too, is, on one hand, as Commissioner Swift noted, there are very, there's a ton of elements that factor into what square footage and what counts and what doesn't. But on the other hand, if you're going to try to get people's attention, it's, you know, more of, hey, if your house exceeds 3,000 square feet, it's going to be non-conforming, and you'll need a variance to add on to it at all, or to rebuild it if it's destroyed. So that kind of stuff is possible. I don't know. I mean, sometimes people just don't pay attention to this stuff till it gets to the town council. But certainly, the fact that we're having a discussion, no decision's going to be made at this meeting, it's going to be continued, it'll be re-noticed, we will broaden the scope of that notice and have another hearing on it, at a minimum, at least one more hearing, and then it goes to the town council with a revised proposed ordinance, assuming it, you know, changes are recommended, and then it would have to be at least two town council meetings. So along the way, I, information will percolate out to the community, it's just, will the commission really get the broader public involved in that? It's hard to say.
Other questions, Laura?
Just had a quick one, because the other commissioners kind of answered, asked the other ones I had, but on your recommendations on 3A, I wasn't quite sure if I understood. I think some of Cindy's questions about the reconstruction got answered, but I wasn't sure what you meant with, without consideration of how much maintenance is necessary relative to floor area of the building. Can you maybe explain that?
Sure. This is one of those tricky phrases that's in the non-conforming section right now. We don't need to parse the phrases, but what it basically says is that less than 50% are, they're allowing routine maintenance. So short of this destruction question, whether a big limb falls on your house, or, you know, it's burnt down halfway or whatever, this notion about, well, can you maintain it? And so the phrase routine maintenance is allowed. So the recommend, or the question to the commission is whether or not they want to simply allow one-for-one reconstruction. So if somebody realizes that their house has termites or whatever, just whether or not you would say, yeah, you can do one-for-one reconstruction, period, whether or not we have to worry about whether it's a routine maintenance or damage repair or things like that.
Okay, so it's, because it wasn't caused by a disaster, but you did find that you've got extensive dry rot termite, or there's some other, the building is unsafe, and there needs to be some, some major construction to happen in order to, to bring the structure safe again?
Right, yeah. Termite damage would be a classic, where, you know, where I think of houses that people didn't realize that they'd basically been destroyed by termites, and so they end up buying a house and demolishing it because they have to do that to, you know, have a good house again.
I thought I was clear when I got here. Now I'm more confused. So, and maybe you already answered the question, but for clarification, are you asking us to decide on the maximum size of the house, including the accessory dwelling unit, or to just separate that for now and talk about the primary dwelling?
It's everything that, as Commissioner Swift noted, the various factors that go, that are currently counted in maximum floor area right now. So the question is, for example, would the commission consider a three-car garage or 750 square feet to be not counted for some of these larger residents, given that people like to have big garages these days, or maybe they don't want to change that? So all the elements that do or don't go into consideration of square footage, I mean, sheds would be another classic example of, you know, do you want people to be able to build small sheds that don't even require a building permit without triggering FAR considerations, maybe allow at least one? So those are the kind of factors. I mean, that's why I did that really long recommendation, because that was just in the brief time I was thinking about this and trying to come up with requests and recommendations, that was just like, okay, these are all the issues.
Okay. I'm trying to separate, you know, structures, construction from, you know, separating or putting them into two categories. One is habitable, conditioned dwelling space. The other, not to confuse matters, you know, other things like chicken coops, sheds, would be structures that are not habitable, and not to confuse matters, but those go under a different category called lot coverage. So in my mind, I think just in order for me to, you know, make a recommendation, I'm going to think of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going to think of this as habitable, conditioned dwelling space, regardless of whether it's a primary dwelling or an accessory dwelling for my grandma. Is that correct?
Not under our current code...
Okay.
...because any accessory structure counts towards that maximum square footage right now.
Okay.
And any garage area in excess of 500 square feet counts. So as you said, chicken coops, et cetera, you know, obviously, non-conditioned, non-habitable garages, non-habitable, well, non-conditioned. So those elements may count. Now, in discussing this with the principal planner, her opinion was there's very few large garages in Fairfax, so I don't, that's one of the things we're going to have to research, is, you know, how many more than 500-square-foot garages does the county think we have? But if there are three-car garages, those have square footage that would count, and so let's just say they have 750 square feet of garages, they may only have two, well, if we were considering a 3,000-square-foot limit on floor area as we define it now, if their house is 2,750 square feet, and they had that 750-square-foot garage, they would be at the maximum right now.
Okay. I'm just, I'm trying to think about how this applies to, you know, other jurisdictions and why we have, and, you know, I didn't realize that, that we were counting chicken coops in our floor area ratio count, you know, things like that?
Right.
Because in my mind, that's why we have lot coverage ratios, you know? I think the intent is to minimize impacts to the environment and overbuilding a lot, and so that's, you know, where lot coverage comes in. It seems like we're kind of asking the floor area ratio to do kind of double duty there. So I just want to make sure, because that's, I didn't know that, that we were counting uninhabitable space. Okay, so that's good to know. The other, okay, so you're, and you're saying that basically, right now, it's up to us to recommend whether we include accessory dwelling units in the overall floor area calculation?
Or you could simply direct staff to research things that you're not ready to provide direction on.
Okay. Because what you said about the state throwing floor area out the window is new, and that does make a difference, you know, if that's the direction we're going in, then, then maybe we should start separating it now, so that we don't have to amend, you know, the code later when that goes out the window? I don't know. This is just kind of what's going through my mind.
Questions, Esther?
Those are, those are questions, stated as comments. Sorry.
Are there any other questions from planning commissioners?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm just a little bit confused, as to what happens when there's a green property, what, you know, first of all, the definition of that needs to be clarified, but what happens there? There's some kind of bonus that's given, and I can't quite figure out how that works.
Yes, I believe this was Fairfax getting ahead of the curve back when those provisions were created and really saying, look, we don't have all the codes like we do now. So what we want to say is if you're doing X, Y, and Z, and, you know, there's that list of various green elements, green building being a term for, you know, environmentally superior energy saving, et cetera, if you have all those factors, then you get an additional bonus for square footage, and, let's see, so, and that was also something that the council opined probably wasn't necessary anymore. We know that the state code, building codes and local other code requirements, green building requirements have pretty much caught up to that, and so that's, that's the standard now. So their idea was, no, get rid of that allowance for additional square footage, you know, you don't...
Okay, thank you.
Chair, can I ask just one quick question?
Norma, go ahead, you had one coming, and then I'll call on you, Cindy.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify where you list on Page 6 and 7, you list the residential properties that are greater than specific square footages. I wasn't sure if those numbers were cumulative, but as I add them up, they don't really add up, and so clearly, it is in each category. So for 2,500, there's 198, and at 3,000, there are actually 72. So in total, we have 830 units if you add up all of those numbers.
Yeah, to tell you the truth, when I was, it's easy to get that confused, but that's why I put in that language that says equal to or greater than. So anything that's greater than that number is cumulative. For example, in the ratio between 4,000 and 4,500 square feet, there's actually six in that ratio. But when you add that to the houses equal to that are greater than 4,000, so in other words, the ones that are greater than 4,500 square feet, the six that are between 4,000 and 4,500 would be added to the four that are greater than 4,500 to get 10.
Each number includes the previous number.
Yeah, that's right.
Cindy?
So when we talk about variances, we do have a cap on variances over the maximum floor area, just for my clarification. I don't think you can go beyond 10% of the floor, maximum floor area. So when we talk about, you know, if we're lowering whatever it is we're going to be potentially lowering, that there is a cap on variances to going over that, so...
Yeah, that's certainly a factor, and I apologize for not including that, but that would kind of disqualify them for consideration, for anybody that was, would be over that maximum for a variance.
I have a couple of questions. I'm glad you mentioned the council's direction regarding the green building requirements and the solar requirements, and when I went through those items in the code, let's see, on Page 3, you see the examples of the green building technologies, so it's apparently not all-inclusive. There's a reference in Item B to the town's GreenPoints application, and so I'm hoping that you can get us a copy of that, because, you know, and if there are other green building technologies that would, we should be considering in terms of saying, you know, people can't get these extra square feet if they use these materials, and whether or not it is in fact true for these, that they're all caught up, you know, the state of the art is, you know, relatively affordable, and, you know, I'm also specifically interested in the use of permeable surface materials, since that's been an issue for the town with respect to our sidewalks in terms of cost. And so I think it's important, before we tell people that they're not going to be able to get any more of these bonuses for using these things, that we know whether or not they are in fact as affordable as the town council was mentioning the solar panels are, or, you know, relatively speaking. I have a lot of specific questions about the way this works. I wanted to ask Cindy if you would repeat that data that you went over in terms of how many of the lots were developed versus undeveloped versus duplexes versus single family? Could you just repeat those?
So I got this from staff, because I asked the question, and what I got back was, we have, because I wanted to look at how the reality of making any changes to our environment as undeveloped lots we have. So we've got 237 undeveloped, single-family properties. We've got a total of 2,137 developed, single-family properties, and we have 270 developed duplexes.
Thank you. And in terms of the numbers that we have beginning on Page 6, do we know, you've got single-family and duplex listed there, do we know, for example, with the 4, the 10, the 28, how many of those are duplexes?
I believe there are some in every category. I think it's like 1/4 to 1/10 of those were duplexes, which, when you consider that, you know, you take that number, divide it by 2, but that's another consideration, is are you going to allow somebody to build two whatever square foot, you know, right below the, I mean, at the maximum duplexes, so you have a structure that's twice, effectively twice?
And I'm correct that we're just talking about residential structures, we're just talking about single-family and duplex, right?
Correct.
When we're talking about counting the floor area of a garage in excess of 500 square feet for a single- square feet for a single family and 800 square feet for a duplex, if they have a thousand square foot garage, do we count the whole thousand or do we subtract the 500 as an allowance?
Subtract the uncounted.
I've got a lot of notes. I do have a lot of questions about the relationship of the floor area ratio to the reduction in the maximum, and you've used a lot of terms in this document. We'll call it the maximum residential square footage limit for now. Maximum residential square footage limit, the MRSFL. And so with that maximum residential square footage limit and how it relates to the floor area ratio limits, I heard the mayor say that he wanted us not to worry so much about how the floor area ratio related, that we're just focused on the maximum, M S R L F, whatever, and, and not worry about the floor area ratio. But what I hear is that the variances are tied to the floor area ratio. Was I misunderstanding what you and Commissioner Swift were saying?
It could be. So that would, we would certainly want to look at that and make sure that we didn't create some, for example, with non-conforming, we say, oh, yeah, you can do one for one, but then we created a problem with FAR.
So for somebody who had a non-conforming use, the impacts on their FAR are going to have one set of consequences. And for somebody who has yet to build, those implications are going to be different because you're going to write in some sort of, or we are thinking of recommending the town council write in some sort of allowance for rebuilding of these non-conforming existing structures, but not for the ones that are sort of potential structures, right? Like, or somebody whose floor area ratio, like the one we've got today, is below, you know, 3,000, but still a healthy sized residence, you know, the potential if the floor area ratio were big enough, even though they're below the, the number. I mean, I think that's why you guys said you were going to increase the universe of people you're going to send the notice to. But I'm just trying to understand whether there's, I think there's different impacts for those who have already built out beyond whatever maximum residential square footage limit we set and those who haven't, right?
Well, likely if we were to reduce the floor area, it wouldn't, it would bring houses below the floor area ratio maximum because whatever FAR maximum they were at that, say, 3,000 square foot cap on a, what's that, a 12,000 square foot lot or something like that, that if we reduced the, that down to 3,000 square feet and they had a 4,000 square foot conforming house by virtue of FAR, that 3,000 square feet would still be, that would be well within the FAR. So, but you're right that the idea would be to grandfather in existing developed properties and apply these, apply the limits to the new, newly developed properties or people that wanted to expand if that were the intention. I mean, you know, really, the town could do whatever it wanted.
All right. Well, I think the rest of my questions can wait until after. We've heard from any members of the public who care to comment on this. I'm really interested in any of the members of the public who are here, if you have thoughts about the maximum square footage. The town council is kind of talking around 3,000. Anyway, I'm not, and I'm not trying to color anybody's thoughts or comments, but I would be very interested for one.
A couple of things. I have a question. If, if something happens to a existing above the limit structure and they want to build, are you saying that they can build back to that limit?
I think we're just talking about all sorts of options and trying to get our heads around all of that.
All right, so I'm from the Keep Fairfax Fairfax School. And, you know, people are saying 3,000 is a small house and the, 3,000 in my view is not small. I would like that to be the ceiling for Fairfax. I think when we're reading about Ross and, we're not Ross, we're not Kenfield, and we're not San Antamo. So my vote is to stay with the 3,000 limit. And it will keep people who are, who are really wanting this to not stay Fairfax from coming in here and building. And that is completely my opinion for that. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public care to weigh in?
Hi, I'm Mark Vendetti, 19 Muriel Place. I agree with the previous comments. I think that 3,000 foot cap would tend to maintain the character that we love about this town. And I also wanted to speak about Nextdoor, posting on Nextdoor. I, I think it's a great way to get the word out about what we're doing. I just would like to caution everyone to think very carefully and work very carefully to craft the posting so that it answers, I had the same question that Philip had, for example, about what is the intent of it? I think the posting needs to be more than just a simple nuts and bolts about when the hearing is and what the hearing is, is for. And it needs to speak to the human element, the intention of what the, the, the whole procedure is for, you know, what is the point of it? Otherwise, it's just like an open invitation for trolls, for hackers, for people that just tend to be very negative on, on forums like Nextdoor to just have a field day with it. And they'll just be able to attack the good intentions of the commission, you know, what we're trying to do here in town. So, you know, have it be factual and also make it human, give it a reason and a justification for being. So, thank you.
Would you push the little button until the red light is?
Thank you. Lena Maria Straya, 19 Muriel Place. I also have listened carefully to all of the facts you have brought up regarding this structure, and I also wonder the necessity for it. I've lived in a 600 square foot house and are currently a 950 square foot home and feel that's huge. So I don't know if they are planning a big family or what, you know, if other members of the family are going to move in, but that would be helpful in your story that you would share on Nextdoor for people to have some input about that and whether they're going to have chickens in a chicken coop or, you know, what are they going to do with that land? Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else want to weigh in? Thank you, and we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. And Phil, you want to start?
Well, the, the issue of floor area ratio, it seems to my, my view of it permeates all of our planning and zoning discussions in almost any project we ever discuss. So that has to be carefully maintained. If we get rid of the green bonus, that probably will go towards that goal. But sort of partly a question, is not the floor area ratio theory itself the idea that we don't want so much raw land just to be covered with cement and stuff and we want water to be able to permeate? Is there a environmental reason for floor area ratio? And I think it's incredibly important versus the size of the house, which I see as not as important as maintaining the floor area ratio. So if you're going to put these things on a scale of importance, yeah, they do balance with each other, they mesh with each other, it's a gray area. And I think we need to pay most attention to that rather than this idea of the size of the house because that's kind of vague. I mean, Commissioner Swift pointed that out, I mean, at least where we are now. So that's, that's kind of my comment. The other thing was I thought we want to, well, I would like to see the least amount of houses impacted by this as could be because your point about the resale value of a house and its non-conforming aspect, it's not like a non-conforming bedroom, which could be undone if needed. If you have too big a house, it's non-conforming, there's not much you're going to be able to do about it. And so that's an issue, you know, in resale and financial aspects of lending and all that. So if we're going to sort of select a level of, of size of house and that, that's kind of the parameter we're going to look at, I would say the parameter that would affect the least number of existing larger houses, so I'm thinking 3,500 feet, something like that, because the town council's request is something around 3,000, it's not 3,000. So that's what I would do just because of your, your data. And I understand it's kind of raw and not, not that, not that accurate, but the idea, my idea is to affect the least number of existing houses as we can. Of course, going forward, yeah, it's going to affect the builders of new undeveloped more.
Somebody else want to weigh in?
I don't know that I can make a recommendation tonight. I think as far as, I think we need to put out more notices to the, to the public. And, you know, we were talking about, we've got like roughly 2,100 developed properties, single fam, properties. And when you look at equal to or greater than 2,000 square feet, that's 518, so that's like a quarter of those properties. For something like this that has, potentially has a large impact, I think the town should be mailing notices to property owners for something like this, to put the word out. We also have, I think we've come up with more questions kind of than answers tonight. You know, for example, the 237 undeveloped single-family properties, what do we think those properties could accommodate legally? The chair talked about, you know, the green bonus piece of it. I believe at the council meeting, there was discussion of bringing in staff attorney to weigh in on some of the issues with legal non-conforming, the potential issues there. So kind of, you know, and then we've talked about things like, well, you know, we could take a look at what's considered. You know, do we consider accessory structures on a lot or not? So as you said, this is kind of, we're open to looking at a lot of things that I hadn't even considered this week. You know, I was taking for granted that, you know, we would be considering the accessory structures on a lot that, because they play into it now. So, you know, I think I would put this off, I would continue this so we have more information and then perhaps we can make a recommendation because I, for one, right now, can't, am not ready to make a recommendation.
Michelle, do you have any comments you want to share?
Okay, thank you. And thank you to staff for taking this on. So I'm a big supporter of amending the single family and the duplex ordinance to reduce the maximum building size. And I think that we can definitely link it to a combination of economic pressure regionwide with the lack of affordable housing elsewhere. There will start to maximize and purchase properties going outwards from San Francisco and Oakland by purchasing cheaper property, building larger homes where they can and selling them for more money. So I think that we can link it to resources, preservation, and the environment. So I do think that 3,000 square feet is the right amount. And the reason why is because looking at the staff page on six and seven, 85% of the homes are less than 3,000 square feet when 15% is greater than that. So I think that 3,000 is that threshold. I would like to see us consider as part of those amendments kind of an exception for maintenance so that we're encouraging, so I'm seeing these as two separate things. One is new construction limited to 3,000 and existing buildings limiting to 3,000. So with the existing buildings, we're talking about allowing exceptions for maintenance, long-term maintenance of those buildings, not expansion of them, but we want to encourage people to maintain their properties. Yes, maintain the variance if people want to increase their building size beyond the 3,000. And then the third level is addressing nonconformity, meaning that if there's a man-made impact to that structure, fire, flood, and it was originally a legally constructed building over 3,000 square feet, then it's a legal non-conforming building. And I think that they should be able to build, rebuild as is. But I do think that we do need more information. I think we're hearing a lot of it all ready about what we need when we come back. But I'm not, I don't feel like we should be waiting because I feel like the pressure to build here is great and that we can initiate the modification to the ordinances, continue to invite people to communicate with us and refine as we're going. But I do think that we need more information on where are the locations of the underdeveloped single family, where are the existing duplexes? We heard all of them now, I don't really need to repeat them, the definitions of floor area ratio, definition of accessory structure, definition of building coverage. I'd like to see more on the general plan policy that supports this idea of reducing it. So linking it more to our small-town character and our view sheds and our topography and fire danger and of course, our protection of the environment, greenhouse gases and all of that. So I think not necessarily the next meeting, but I think those are the things that we can hang our hat on for reducing building sizes going forward. And I am in support of deleting the green building variance because I think that the building code already is inclusive of many of the topics that are in there already.
When you're talking about underdeveloped, would that be possibly looking at things like relating lack or available room relative to the size of the lot or the size of the house with respect to slope and other aspects? I mean?
No, and it might not, what, I heard those numbers that Cindy was bringing up, and I think those are really good information to have. And I think we should have those repeated in the information that we get back. And what I heard was X amount of And what I heard was X amount of undeveloped, single-family homes, X amount of developed, single-family homes, but although those homes are developed, they may be underdeveloped, so they may, or they already may be overdeveloped. And so how we treat, if they're underdeveloped, how we treat exceptions, variances, and non-conformity may be affected by that. Because if they're already all under, it's not that big of a deal. If they're already over, then maybe we want to put a little bit more thought into what I'm proposing, which is a bit of a change from our past practices to allowing exceptions, not necessarily allowing variances for some things, but allowing variances for other, and then allowing non-conformity to be redefined. So, does that answer the question?
It helps, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on my left over here, Esther?
Well, I'm trying to figure out how to make a recommendation that's clear and doesn't have too many conditions. And I'm thinking that whatever standards we adopt should apply to new construction, new development. I'm thinking what is already there by right or by, you know, being grandfathered in. It's pre-existing legal, non-conforming, but I think to avoid all the real estate questions that, in my mind, this should apply to new construction, whether it's a new house or addition to an existing house that has a little bit of an allowance left. So that's my first comment. The other comment I have is that this existing 5,000-square-foot limit was before accessory dwelling units hit California. And so I'm thinking, okay, a 3,000-square-foot house is a big house. And regardless of, you know, whether we like it or not, really, the lot coverage is going to dictate how much we impact the environment and sightlines and all that. So I'm thinking until we have another law from California, I have to assume that if I have a 3,000, if I have a three-acre lot, and I develop a 3,000-square-foot house, and I want a workshop, and I want a barn or a greenhouse, that I could reach 5,000 very easily, and an accessory dwelling unit for my grandmother. You know, I'm thinking, okay, my 3,000-square-foot house is big for three acres, it's maybe big enough, but I still want the 1,200-square-foot accessory dwelling unit, and I want a greenhouse. So I'm, you know, I came in here thinking, well, you know, 4,000 might be reasonable, because again, lot coverage is going to dictate the size or the development. But now with the ADU law, I kind of feel like we're back, you know, we're, it kind of flushes out. So, I mean, I really am tempted to leave it at 5,000 square foot, square feet until we have more information from the state, because, and I don't know if there's a way to create a subcategory that says a primary residence is 3,000 square feet, and any other accessory dwelling or accessory structures, whether it's a dwelling or a chicken coop, can be up to 2,000 square feet. So, I mean, if I have, you know, vintage cars, and I want a second garage, you know, more than 500 square feet, I can easily use that 2,000 square, you know, square foot overage. So that's my second comment. I think California is, you know, leading the country in our green building initiatives and the direction that we're going, that are, it's becoming mandated almost now to include a lot of upgrades, and, you know, if you don't include them, they make you upgrade the rest of the house when you make improvements. And so I would like the 10%, I think it's 10% above, the 10% variance for green building. I kind of think that there's a little bit of an overlap with what the state is doing already anyway. So that's two. There was, I actually had a comment earlier, I know we're not at questions anymore, but there's a 5% variance for hardship, is that correct? What kind of hardship is, I mean, what's the hardship?
There's only been one since this ordinance was adopted, and it was a family that had a lot of family members and extended family members and needed additional square footage to house them all.
Okay.
And they all came to the meeting.
Okay. So, let's see. I think also on the rebuild, and I think it's already been addressed, that dry rot and termite damage should not be counted. You know, I'm not sure how you would calculate the 50%, but sometimes, you know, you start off thinking you're just going to replace the structure of the porch, and then you open it up, and it's like, you know, you start pulling on the string, and before you know it, you realize the whole house is impacted, and then you're replacing all the main structural members. And so I don't think that people who are trying to fix their house should be penalized for doing so by being limited for things like dry rot and termite damage or pest And I do like the comment by the gentleman about next door, the announcement being specific to our intent, just because we've seen too many times where people don't understand what we're trying to do and assume the worst, and come here with guns a-blazing, and it's not necessary. So it would be nice to put something in there, if we do post anything, that we are trying to preserve the character of Fairfax and minimize impacts to environment and the neighborhood. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Esther. Laura?
Okay, so I support reducing 3,000. I think Phil had a good point, too, 3,500, I think somewhere in that range. But the accessory building thing is always, is always kind of complicated, and I deal with it in my profession, and I sometimes get confused. I think in general, most cities count the accessory buildings, but I share Esther's comment at the beginning about, there should be a distinction between habitable and non-habitable. I mean, I think that's the intent of why the garage is separated, and so I never really understood why they don't apply that to accessory buildings. I mean, I can understand if somebody's using it, you know, as an office or pool cabana, I mean, it is living space, but when it's a tool shed, I don't think. And there's also conflicts when you've got the zoning code, and then the building code. The building code says you don't need building permits when they're, you know, a certain size, but zoning counts, and it gets, it's just confusing. So it might be an opportunity where maybe we can provide some more clarity on that issue. About the green building, I agree that that's, it's not necessary now in our code. And about the rebuild, I think the homeowners should have the right to be, to rebuild what they had unless they had major changes proposed from the original design. So I think that that's an important thing to consider. And a thought I had about noticing is, I know in the past, for important issues like this, the town has set up like a survey where people can express their opinions, and maybe that might be an option and to consider. So, you know, at this point, I think we do have a lot of good comments. I think we can pass on to the council, or I don't know, or for the next staff report, we can consolidate all of these, and maybe we do, but I think we definitely probably need to continue and get some more input on the issue.
Thanks, Laura. Norma?
I do have a couple of comments, I'll kind of take them a page at a time. But I'll follow up on the idea of posting information on next door. I also find that things kind of go haywire at next door, and while it's a good medium for posting and making people aware, I think it should refer people back perhaps to a town site that has specific information, actual information. I think what happens on the net, or at least on next door sometimes, is that information is misconstrued and misrepresented. So if we could refer some basic information, yes, but always refer back to the town. In terms of the green points, I think, yeah, we could do without the green point application process that is here, but I, for one, would very much like to see all of our green building requirements, have them all in one place, that we could review them and really take a good look to see. And I also have seen that the county has adopted some revised green building ordinances that I find a lot of very attractive features in. And so I would like to see what ours is and compare it to the county. And I would even think we might want to incorporate some of those county elements. In terms of, in terms of replacement of properties damaged, I also believe that people should be allowed to replace one for one if it was developed appropriately and according to code and permitted. I don't know if there's a difference between, well, there is a difference between illegal and legal non-conforming, but I wonder if we should look at a non-conforming versus a grandfathered category for previously developed under code that does not have the negative implications that, the negative real estate implications that could occur with legal, non-conforming uses. On a slightly separate note, I very much support a no net housing loss, no net unit loss moving forward, either for reconstruction or particularly new construction of new development. I think I would also agree to have some exceptions for certain types of accessory structures that are not actually livable, habitable. And I also agree that the floor area, the floor area ratios is what governs the amount of development on a particular property. And I find that as important as the size of a unit. I do tend to agree 3,000, 3,500 is probably more than sufficient. Then again, you know, if you have a 10,000-acre site, would I want to limit myself to a smaller house? I don't know. Another thing is that I think June would be too soon to come back. I don't know that you guys can pull all this information and respond to our questions by then. I think definitely more time is needed, particularly with the state changing regulations, in the middle of changing regulations. We could get started, as Michelle suggested, start moving forward, giving ourselves the flexibility to adapt as the state makes their changes. And also, I would really like to see some sketch options that come back to us. We've talked before about form-based zoning, and I think it's difficult for people to grasp sometimes, what does 3,000 square feet look like? And particularly, what is the relationship between the square footage of a property and the property itself? If we could see a couple of examples that are sketched out for us, so we can see the relationship between a 3,500-square-foot lot on a 5,000-square-foot, or a 3,500-square-foot house on a 5,000 or a 10,000-square-foot property, to get people a better understanding of what the FARs, the floor area ratios are. And I think it would also help us and possibly sketch out an accessory office space that is actually lived in versus the chicken coop or the storage shed that's 100 square feet. And so I think that's the extent of my comments right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Anybody else want to weigh in? All right. I'm going to try and get this done quickly, but I do have thoughts, so. I think we could come back in June for further discussion. And if you all have specific questions in June, as you start to work on this, I would think that you'd come back and talk to us about that. We'd get the word out, both with the mail and whatever other means we possibly can, and hope that we can generate interest in those who might be impacted by the things we're talking about, and provide another opportunity for public input in June, even if we're not ready for, you know, a specific language. At the same time, I think there's certainly work we could get a jumpstart on in terms of looking at the way the code is currently drafted, and potentially putting together like a red line to show what you think we might want to start talking about in that meeting. For example, under 17-136010, which is the purpose, we heard a lot of input from not only the commissioners here tonight, but also from the town council about what some of the motivations are for reducing the house maximum residential square foot limit. And I think we could add or expand to some of the reasons that are listed under B that I think there is a lot of clarifications, and you mentioned clarifications of certain things. And as I read through these, that became abundantly clear to me. So I would also appreciate you taking a hand at making some of the clarifications that you think are appropriate. For example, from my perspective, some of that language in 17-136040 about variances is really garbled and could be clarified, I think. I think that making absolutely clear in these... I think that making absolutely clear in these provisions, FAR versus maximum residential square foot limit, you know, it's almost like highlight those terms whenever they pop up because they kind of meld into each other sometimes in the way the words are used in the ordinance, you know? And it's like, I've got written all over here, like, is this the max cap? Is this the FAR? You know, it's not necessarily clear. I agree with Norma about sketches, but I'm almost more interested in just sort of visually grasping some of the difference with the way these provisions are supposed to work. What's the variance for? Why is it so repetitive? What's the, you know, I mean, because we've got these things where it's like I had to read them twice to figure out what the difference in two paragraphs that come one right after the other are. So I definitely think there could be ways of making this clearer to somebody who's not got all day to study it. Not that we don't, but you know what I mean. So those questions kind of went to 13640. I've already talked about the more information about where the markets are in terms of these green building materials, solar panels, things like that. I don't know if there's a difference between a passive solar design and photovoltaic system because I'm horribly ignorant, so maybe you could help me out with that. I'm also interested in the distinctions between over 50% rebuilding versus under 50% rebuilding, whether those changes when we're talking about legal nonconforming uses, and does it matter if the need for rebuild is voluntary or not? I saw something about raising, and I was wondering if, hey, if you voluntarily raised your house versus, you know, an earthquake involuntarily raised your house, is that treated differently? There's different language for standards versus use regulations, which just makes my life so much better. No, I need to understand those a little bit better. Definitely clarify what we mean by routine maintenance, and I totally agree with Michelle. We've got to be making sure we're encouraging the routine maintenance. In 1716040, C1 says, "The restriction in this division shall not apply to projects that are limited to replacing windows, doors, insulation of insulation to achieve greater energy efficiency, cosmetic floor or wall coverings, roof repairs that do not change the configuration of the existing roof, earthquake preparedness improvements, or projects to generate alternative energy." So I don't know if that means you can go beyond the max cap to install your new area that you're going to have your fusion device in. I mean, I don't know, you know what I mean? You've got a new energy, alternative energy, and you need to expand. Does that give you, does that language mean you can go beyond the max square footage, maximum residential square footage limit that we set?
Well, and then the question, right back to the commission, is does the commission think it should? I mean, depending on how we define that, do we think we should make allowances? Because what I'm hearing from some places is California codes have caught up, and we probably don't need to consider that. So, you know, we could simplify things to say if that's the commission's direction. I mean, we're obviously in a more information mode right now, but that could be when we're looking at changing the language, saying, get rid of that stuff to make it really clear that if the commission decides that they have enough, we have enough green incentives or requirements in the code. I mean, you know, the state just said if you build a new house, it's got to be solar. So, you know, maybe it's just like the ground floor is already pretty green.
Okay. Well, I think of a difference between having provisions that give you extra square footage if you use certain building materials from something that says the requirement to get a variance for a nonconforming structure is not required if you need to make improvements to generate alternative energy. I think that's a very, very broad statement. And if we have a Benjamin Franklin in Fairfax that needs extra room to develop some other type of alternative energy that you and I are unaware of, because that's so broad, alternative energy, right? It's not like solar energy, it's alternative energy.
Methane generation?
I'm just saying, you and I can't necessarily predict whether somebody is going to use that language as a justification for exceeding even the 5,000 square foot maximum cap that we currently have. And I would like to make sure that when we come back with revised language, that we've tightened that up so Benjamin Franklin has to come before us and ask us for a variance to house his nuclear fusion device.
Okay.
I'm not done, but you have a comment? All right. I would like to see, as I already said, I want to see us use this consistent terminology. I don't really have strong feelings one way or the other about the number in terms of 3,000, 3,500. My birthday is 325, so let's go with 3,250 square feet. That would make me happy. in the bullets on page eight of your staff report. "If up to 50% of the building is destroyed by a fire or natural calamity, et cetera, the structure may be reconstructed as it previously existed, provided the work commences within a year and is diligently pursued to completion. But if more than 50% is destroyed by fire, natural calamity, et cetera, or is voluntarily razed, the structure may not be reconstructed in a manner that increases any nonconformity, and the restoration must conform zoning requirements to the greatest extent possible." So, yeah, I think Cindy had already raised this. It's sort of a question in my mind about the difference between the standard of greatest extent possible versus for the over 50% and whether we can develop any guidelines for ourselves.
This raises an interesting question, too, because this whole notion about getting the work started and pursuing it to construction. I mean, on one hand, in a widespread fire situation, obviously, we're going to take action to let people take longer. But on the other hand, if somebody has a house that's destroyed by whatever, you know, there's probably some incentive to say, we'll let you do this without going through this extended process if you get going, because as we know, the buildings that aren't finished or that are trashed, they really become eyesores and problems in a neighborhood. So that's one of the factors to say, hey, maybe we want to keep that in there to say, you know, we will incentivize you to be able to do this, whether it's more than 50%, less than 50%, you're doing it because you discovered the house is riddled with termites, whatever, but we want you to get going on that versus, you know, taking your sweet time about it, in which case maybe we say, yeah, you're back to a variance if you don't get it started and pursue it to completion. I mean, that's just a factor that when you're looking at that section, you know, those are the type of considerations. It's like, well, it could be used as an incentive to get the job started and to finish it.
Okay. And then I would also like to see when you come back, if there's any way you can give us some pros and cons of some of the suggestions you have in the recommendations under number You know, I just would be interested in seeing what you have to say. I heard you say something, Ben, in your initial report, that the homes that you identified on page six and seven were not currently nonconforming. And I think you mean as to size, because I don't think you have information about other possible nonconforming.
That's very true.
And off the top of your head, or maybe you or Linda know this, what are the average square footage of the homes that Marshall Rothman is proposing for the wall property?
They're all averaging over 4,000 square feet, although I would take pains to say that this project in all likelihood will not be affected at all by any action taken here.
Why do you say that?
Simply because of the stage of that project and, yeah, the stage of that project and completion, et cetera. So.
Did you provide notice to Mr. Rothman about this?
He is aware of the possibility of reduction in square footage.
Okay. I would like to make sure that any notices also include Mr. Rothman specifically. Those are my thoughts. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's a lot to work with, so I appreciate the feedback.
And at the risk, oh, I'm sorry.
And along those lines, I think it's really important for something like this to do a mailer.
Well, clarification, we did put together a mailing list of all the, I think it was actually 90 properties. We overshot the mark. And so those people received a notice with, it was the entire agenda, but it had an arrow pointing to the consideration. So they got in their mailbox, each one of those properties got a notice. So they didn't catch the implications, they're too busy, who knows?
Right. But potentially, we could be looking at more properties.
Right.
And I think, as some of the other commissioners have said, you know, this is probably a discussion that warrants the community input, and you sent it out to 90 people.
Yeah.
But there's a broader audience that could play into this as far as notification.
But can I just ask you to clarify, when you say a mailer, what's your parameters? You want it to go to people with houses over 2,000 square feet? You want it to go to every residential property? Because
It's expensive.
That's kind of expensive and very time consuming. So I think the commission should determine what they want. Like, do you want to pick houses over 2,000 square feet? Or do you just want it to go to every house? It may not be possible to send it to every single house.
Yes, certainly. The logistics of that would, might push it, for example, into a July meeting date or something like that, just looking at what else is on our plate if we're sending out notices and folding 2,000 envelopes or, you know, pieces of paper and things like that. It just adds significantly.
I would consider anything 2,000 and over, and then you also have your undeveloped properties. I don't know if any of those folks would have been noticed.
So my particular feeling on this is that we're not far enough along. I feel like if we wanted to have a workshop of some sort, that we could more broadly describe something around it. But I think just inviting people in at this early stage at that level, I don't know what we would be asking for. I'm a little worried about that part of it. But I do think if we could piggyback on community letters that are going to people's houses or Parks and Rec news that are going to people's houses, or posts that we can piggyback on through nonprofits or other community sources would be helpful to point to somewhere on our website where we're more broadly describing what are we, what are we being asked to do at the council level? Why? What's being considered? And that they should be giving us input at this, at this level at these meetings. I think that would be helpful, but.
Something in the town newsletter, maybe.
Well, my thought about notice is normally we give, if there's a project, a specific address, we give notice to, what, 500 feet?
300.
300 feet? So I don't know if this is possible, but could, what if we identify these properties over a certain square footage that we want to send notice to, and then since they're all possible projects, they get notice out to 300 feet around each one of those?
Wow.
That wouldn't be possible.
You're back to a town.
Right, okay.
But also because we don't have an ordinance in front of us, we're not, what are we notifying them about? I'm a little worried about, when do we get down to that level of notice?
You're right. This is the problem. So I think if we do notice again, we've got to, to me, this is a big deal. What we need to do is send something that is kind of more plain English, maybe. I mean, you know, Cindy had some problems with it, and my God, if Mimi, who's an attorney, had some issues with it, you know, we're going to have issues. So I think we need to continue this as well. By the way, my 3,500 feet doesn't come from my birthday. It comes from the idea that a 3,000 square foot with a minimum of a 500 square foot ADU, which we have, that's kind of where that number comes from. But the idea here is notice should go out broader somehow. Maybe it should be on the homepage of the
Yeah. I think we'll have something that isn't bold on page one of the town's website that says Fairfax to consider. In fact, what the heck, I can even do a press release, right? Shoot it out to the IJ, they'll probably run it. I mean, they used to catch this kind of stuff when they'd read the agendas and be sitting in the audience, but we could do that. I mean, that's not that big a deal. That's free publicity.
And then Ross Valley Reporter and, you know,
Okay.
Suffolk Sun, if you, if it's not that hard.
Newspapers of general circulation, as they say in the litigation world. So I think the idea here is, you know, the public has a wonderful opportunity here to weigh in real early on these ideas, because it just came as a little spark from the town council, and now we're kind of questioning it out and broadening the ideas and getting some more parameters into, you know, the space that we're in. And I think it would be, it's just wonderful that we can include the public so early on in this process. So let's get the notice out and let them know we're doing that for them, really. This is for the community, it's for the town, so.
Yeah. It may be useful to kind of have a broad language discussion for the next meeting, discussing things like accessory buildings, chicken coops, you know, should they, should they count? Should there be an allowance? You know, because as you bring down the square footage, you know, all of a sudden, that chicken coop costs you a bedroom. So those are the kind of things that the public could probably wrap themselves around. When they're looking at a definition of voluntary raising to a degree of 50% or more, you know, yeah, when we're parsing words, that's going to be the commission, because even your commission is kind of acknowledging, and, you know, when somebody said they had to read it twice, I mean, definitely, I mean, that's the first thing I did was I read it twice. And then the ones that I was still trying to figure out, I'd go back to and just read it three. So that's the kind of stuff where, as we get into rewording it, you're not going to expect the public to be commenting on, you know, we think we should put a semicolon there. But in terms of right now, your chicken coop counts, and, you know, if you have 5,000 square feet, who cares, right? I mean, that's a big limit. But when you bring it down to 3,000, But when you bring it down to 3,000, then all of a sudden, you know, that restriction... So those are the type of things I just conceptually...
Okay. Thank you. I want to keep us on track here. We're a little further behind than I wanted to be. And let's take a quick break. Let's reconvene in five minutes or less. Okay. We're going to bring this meeting back to order. And we are going to move on to item number two on our public hearing, which is the 20 Park Lane, application number 18-04.
Continue.
Oh, that one's being... Never mind. All right. Number three. 176 Willow Avenue.
Could I intervene? If the planning commission... If we want to avoid re-noticing that, we request that the commission take action to continue it to that date, to the June 21st Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Do I have a motion from somebody?
I still move.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 There we go. Ask and you shall receive. So now, Principal Planner Neil is going to talk to us about 176 Willow Avenue.
Okay. The applicants are proposing to enclose the front porch to create a mudroom, convert a portion of the existing entryway into the relocated and remodeled kitchen, and to convert the eastern portion of the kitchen into a dining room. The project will also include the installation of two storage closets off the relocated interior stairway and a new built-in cupboard off the kitchen. The project will increase the residence from 2,137 square feet to 2,241 square feet. The parcel is substandard in size and width due to its 46% slope. So the code requires that any kind of modification or expansion obtain a use permit from the planning commission. Other residences on similar-sized and sloped lots in this subdivision range in size from an 870-square-foot residence on a 12,642-square-foot site with an FAR of .07 to a 2,872-square-foot residence on a 23,280-square-foot site with an FAR of .12. The proposed expansion will result in 176 Willow having an FAR of .16, which is still well below the permitted .40 FAR and below the FAR maintained by the largest house in the subdivision of .26. Therefore, the project will not be out of scale with the project site or out of character with the neighborhood. Therefore, we're recommending that you approve the project by adopting resolution number 2018-05, which sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. That would conclude our report.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by commissioners?
I have a basic question. Is... It seems to me this is 104-square-foot addition, approximately.
Right.
Okay. That's my question.
And it doesn't go outside the footprint of the existing house?
I know. So therefore, I kind of wonder why we're here, but...
It's one of the ones that we wonder why we're here, too.
It's the smaller lot size, right, that requires it to come back?
Right.
Is this one of the types of projects that we've considered for administrative review?
Yes.
Since it meets all the setbacks and everything?
Right. Right. It's a good example of that.
Any other questions of staff?
I have a question. Just regarding the resolution and condition number 12. So as I understand it, the applicants adding the 104 square feet, but they're going to have to fire sprinkler their entire house?
No. I think the house is already sprinklered, so they're just sprinkler... They're extending the sprinkler system into the new living space.
I see.
Thank you.
Is that because of the wooey nature of the...
Yes.
I have a question on the reso condition 2D. The foundation. Is there any new foundation or anything that's being proposed? Because, I don't know, that condition seemed... Doesn't look like there would be any changes.
I'm not absolutely sure. When the stairway is reoriented, are you going to have to pour any new foundation under that area? Yes. Okay. So you can go ahead and eliminate that if you'd like to.
I can make a suggestion. You can just put "if" the foundation.
Okay.
What's the "if"? I'm sorry?
If, like on 2D, if the... If, I could... Oh, if changes are necessary to the foundation, they shall be designed to comply with the building code. I mean, I think the rest of it is fine. And then on 3A, if there is... You know, where the part that says it's in parentheses, "if there are any", I think that that should be at the beginning of that sentence. And I mean, I don't... Usually, the licensed contractor is on site. I think, don't... Didn't we usually have, like, the engineer or something on that? But I don't think it applies in this particular project.
We'll put the "if" in there.
Okay.
But I'll tell you that licensed contractor is not always on site.
Any other comments of staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. And I see the applicants are here. And do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? Don't all jump at once. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing because I don't see anybody who wants to speak on this item. And I'm going to bring it back to the commission and open it up for discussion.
I have a... Maybe I should have brought this up earlier. It's sort of a question and comment at once. But number 11, condition, "All exterior lighting shall be dark sky fixtures", is that all existing... I mean, this is a 100-square-foot improvement to a house. Is that all existing lighting and all new lights?
We just mean the new lights. And if they put any new exterior lighting, that should say.
Maybe the word "new"...
Yeah.
After "all". Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve this item. And that's approving resolution 2018-5, a resolution of the Fairfax Planning Commission to allow enclosure of the 68-square-foot porch to convert an area to a mudroom, et cetera, et cetera, with the modification to condition 2D to read "if changes are necessary to the..." And condition 3A, that it would read, "if there are any grading to be done, the licensed contractor shall..." And to condition 11, to say "all new exterior lighting".
With the modification for your change to 2D, I think "if changes are necessary to the foundation, comma, the foundation shall be..."
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? We are unanimous. We have approved this application. And there is some time period for appeal.
10 days.
10 days. And some price to pay if you want...
$500.
$500. So it'll be final after that, assuming no one appeals. Thank you very much. 10 days, $500. I don't know why I can't remember that. I'm going to write it on the top of all of my agendas. 10 days, $500. All right. So now we're going to move on to 1966 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And we're going to hear again from Principal Planner Neil.
Okay. The Bicycle Museum is applying for a modification of the use permit for the entire building to expand into the Middle Suite B to provide more museum display area, a library and research room, two offices, and to expand the loft storage area. The modifications for the mixed use requires 22 parking spaces and 27 parking spaces are provided on the site. Therefore, the proposed mixed-use modification does not require the approval of a parking variance. The traffic generated by the previous mixed use of the building was estimated to be 124 average daily traffic, or ADT. Expansion of the museum and reduction of the number of employees on the busiest shift for the kitchen use, which is being reduced from Two Suites down to Suite C1, is expected to generate rate... With fewer employees fitting into that area, is expected to generate less ADT to the site. Therefore, the proposed use modification does not require the approval of a traffic impact permit. In reviewing the proposed modifications, staff asked the applicants to provide additional information on the special events that occur in conjunction with the museum use so we could revisit the hours of operation limits in the use permit resolution. Our intent... We were trying to change the conditions in the resolution to allow more flexibility for this building, especially now that the back area is vacant. We don't want them to have to come back for every little change. So the event sometimes utilizes a portion of the parking lot in the front of the structure and sometimes extends to hours the museum is not typically open. Events include the occasional use of the facility for parties. And these often start and extend into the evening hours with cleanups sometimes lasting as late as 11:00 p.m. Staff has not received any complaints about these events that have been occurring on the site. And we do not believe that the proposed extended hours will result in conflicts with the surrounding uses because the evening events occur inside the building. And there's typically a member of the Bicycle Museum in attendance to make sure the noise is curtailed. We're recommending that the hours be expanded for the following reasons. Wholesale food... So I've spoken with the property owner, and he's indicated that he is looking for some type of food preparation, wholesale use for that back space. It's outfitted for that. There's been a lot of money put into, you know, putting in all the kitchen facilities. So we're not really expecting that to change. And wholesale food purveyors usually start their food preparation early in the morning before 8:00 a.m., which was the previous starting time that was allowed. As we said before, events often go past the 7:00 p.m. closing time for the museum. And we do not feel that the proposed modification of the use permit... We believe the proposed changes are in keeping with the originally approved mixed use. So we're recommending that the hours be expanded as follows. That the wholesale food preparation, commercial kitchen hours be changed to 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That the museum hours and days be expanded in case they decide they want to be open more days. We don't see any reason why it can't be seven days a week from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And that special events, including organized bike rides, private parties, film nights, et cetera, be allowed to occur between 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. We're also recommending that the commission amend the conditions as follows. That events occurring beyond 8:00 p.m. be held inside or be moved entirely inside the building at 8:00 p.m. That the permitted uses of the building be generalized so that some modification can occur without all applicants having to return before the planning commission to modify the use permit. We're recommending that the list of permitted uses in the mixed-use building be as follows. Museum, retail, or personal service businesses in Suite A, B, and C, with retail, office, personal service, or wholesale food preparation uses allowed in Suite B and/or C. We also wanted to make a couple of corrections to the resolution and to make sure everybody knows that the name of the museum... I incorrectly, in my notice, called it the Marin Mountain Biking Museum. That's not the official name. It's the Marin Museum of Bicycling. And that name helps convey that it is a history museum, and it shows the full evolution of the bicycle with the collection starting in the 1860s, which is pretty impressive. So the changes we wanted to make to the resolution, I passed out a redlined version. And you got a previous one emailed to you, which still had some places left empty that should have had a time. So on page three, I just want to make sure that... My intention was that the wholesale food preparation, commercial kitchen hours be from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And that the special events occur from 9:00 a.m. It says 6, but it should be 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And therefore, we're recommending that you approve the proposed modification to the mixed-use use permit by adopting resolution 2018-05, setting forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval.
This is 05 or 06?
06. Says 05, but it should be 06.
Okay. Does anyone have questions? No, go ahead, Norm.
Thank you. I just want to confirm that you said the hours for special events are 9:00 to 11:00, but it's really 9:00 to 10:00 with 10:00 to 11:00 for cleanup and... Right. Okay. But you...
You know, since it's inside the building, I don't know that we have to be that strict about it. You know, there's usually some kind of overlap. Things don't end right at 10:00.
Also, special events, do we have a sense of how many we're talking about? I know there's only occasional special events. I just have...
They actually... We actually attached to the... I thought we attached to the staff report a list of the actual events that occurred last year that the applicant provided to us.
And I know last year, there weren't so many that it seemed disruptive. I just have a concern that if it turns into... Oh, I hadn't seen that. If it were to turn into an every-weekend situation, and there's quite a number of them here. There's a couple, one a month, or two or three a month.
I think I can maybe alleviate your fear. So it is a use permit. And if any... If we start getting a lot of complaints, we can bring the use permit back to you. But this is a pretty aware neighborhood, and they all received a notice. And if there are any of them here tonight to speak, I don't see them. Usually, they do show up if they have any concerns about this building, the Klaus area neighborhood.
So that was my only caution.
Cindy?
So can you clarify? Because the staff report and the resolution don't match up as far as museum hours. One is 10, one is 11.
It should be 11. Right? Your hours, you open at 11, right? Yeah. 11 to 7.
Okay. And then I'll have questions probably afterwards on some of the resolution, so...
After the public hearing, you mean?
After the public hearing. Once we bring it back, I have questions on the resolution.
Okey-dokey. Any other questions for staff at this time?
Well, is there any thought about special events being limited to weekend days? Because we're not really specifying that, so...
I wouldn't want to do that because, you know, they hosted, like, the Marin Mayor's and Councilmember's meeting, and that's on a Wednesday night. And they have school events that happen that aren't on the weekends.
Okay. So we don't want to... We don't want to...
I don't think we should. And we haven't received complaints. And this neighborhood, they're... Believe me, they will tell us if there's a problem. And we just haven't heard from anybody.
Right. We know. It's a good neighborhood, I guess.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. So we're going to open up the public hearing. And I take it we've got the applicants here this evening. Does anyone on the commission have a question for the applicants? All right. Cindy?
So I had two questions. I think in some of the additional information that was submitted, it mentioned with the former commercial kitchen that there were parking... Neighborhood parking issues as well as delivery truck issues. And I wanted to find out a little bit more about what those issues were in the neighborhood with the commercial kitchen. And then my other question was the events can draw anywhere from like 30 to 120 folks. And I was wondering if you had a sense of how many of those... And I was wondering if you had a sense of how many of those attendees came either walking or by bike or by car, if you had any sense of that? Thanks.
I can speak to the first question and Joe can, or Carney can do the second. The, I can remember when Miyoko's Kitchen was in full operation there and they had daily both deliveries typically in the morning and pickups in the afternoons. And there was a lot and it grew steadily and eventually led to their having to relocate because they outgrew the space. For us, there's, there's no, there's no deliveries, there's no pickups. That's just not the way we, we don't have a need for that, being the museum. So those issues with the noise of delivery trucks and things rattling and banging like that, that's, that's no longer an issue at all.
So at that time, you had, did you have neighbors come and speak about it, the delivery?
No. I imagine if, no one ever did come to us and mention anything about the delivery trucks situation at all. I can't speak to whether they went next door to Miyoko's and talked with them about it. But we were in communication enough with Miyoko's that I think I would have heard from them even if, if there was an ongoing issue with that. They, they also really tried to be good neighbors as to the extent, fullest extent possible. And I know whenever we would mention something that we would be concerned about, they would act on it right away and get it taken care of. So, but like I say, that's, it's no longer even applicable to our operation. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Hi there. I'm Joe Bries. I'm a board member and curator of the, of the whole shebang over there. And the second question about how many people, I guess, arrive by walking or biking. And I think it's a question that we answered, that we submitted to the town. But, and I don't remember the numbers, but I imagine it's more than most any of the other businesses in town that people arrive by bike and walking to the bike museum. Yeah. Is it good? Okay.
Anyone else with questions?
I actually just have a question about the events. What is salsa bikes? And then you have Ladies Night Dirt Fondo. I'm just curious what the events are. Do you recall?
I know the answer to the first question about-
Salsa bikes?
What is salsa bikes? It's a, it's a brand of bicycle.
Oh.
Yeah. And I don't recall a, a-
Ladies Night?
A meeting.
Yeah, that's a decent comment. They've got one that's Dirt Fondo.
Oh, and the Dirt Fondo, yeah, that's with the Marin County Bicycle Coalition that they had an event in conjunction with our museum.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants? All right.
I do.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And I, and I kind of wanted to ask the question of Mr. Bries. And I'm not a big fan of over, this is more to staff first. I'm not a big fan of over-regulating this. Like, all of this control about hours and people and things just make me really uncomfortable. And I kind of wanted to ask Mr. Bries, in looking at the resolution on page three, what we're seeing, and I'm sure he got a revised resolution, so he knows what we're looking at now, which was revised from the one that went out in the packet. But it's proposing limiting the museum hours and it, limiting the special events and limiting the outdoor events. And I'm wondering whether these hours are flexible enough? And, and the way that this is worded, is this flexible enough to give you something for that the museum can be, you know, growing? Because that's what this application is about. This is about expanding the museum. And I want to talk separately with staff when we get to the public hearing about the bakery, to give you the flexibility that you need to grow the museum. Or is it still just, are they, is it feeling too ratcheted for you?
I mean, we appreciate that.
I'm sorry, can you talk to the mic? Thank you.
We appreciate that. And whatever you can do to help us, help give us that kind of flexibility to maybe open a little bit earlier or help us grow the museum, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say that our, our current opening hours are starting at 11:00 AM, but it is very true that we might want to open earlier. And for instance, we often will open early for a school field trip, allowing them to come at a time that suits them. Could be 9:30, whatever. And, and it is very true that, that it, it would suit us well and, and I doubt that it would have much impact, you know, on the neighborhood. Yeah, thank you.
Well, the, can I just, for clarity, and number three, on page three of the, of the reso, museum hours, it says daily from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
And then staff gave us a modification to 11. And-
Yeah, that was the original, that was, you know, that was the original hours that the museum asked for. And you have to remember that this, we just kind of went off of the old resolution. And this was a, this was like, the neighborhood was coming off of the good earth. And so they were a little gun shy about whatever was going to go into this building because they had just put up with a very, very popular grocery store that really created problems for their neighborhood. So I don't think there's a problem if you want to try to, you know, make things more lenient at this point.
All right, so any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm still at, any other questions for the applicants? All right. And do you guys have anything you want to add for the record? Just now's your opportunity during the public hearing. Otherwise, I'll go ahead and close it.
I just wanted to say a few words about our feeling about we're serving our community here and that out of the five to six founding board members, we live right here in Fairfax, some for over 30 years, the majority, and Mark and I for eight years. And we love the ability to serve the children that come to us from schools, welcoming people from all over the world. And we consider the bicycle to be the noblest invention. And our third year anniversary is on June 6th. And this year of the 2018 World Bicycle Day was created and it'll be celebrated on June 3rd. And the main message being that the bicycle belongs to and serves all of humanity. So we celebrate that message every day at the museum and it's a great honor. And the bicycle was invented for humanitarian reasons due to the 1815 eruption of Mount Tambora, which affected the crops in Germany used to feed the horses. And as you know, back then, pretty much people got around by horse or walking. So Karl von Dres helped by building the first bicycle in 1817. So we're celebrating the 201st anniversary of that noble invention. So we thank you for the opportunity to bring that to this community and outside of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very well. Nicely put. Okay, I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. And who wants to start?
Can you clarify the section in the, in the resolution about modifications and, and what you were looking for there?
Which number are you on?
Probably from the old one, it was-
Number seven?
Part two under, under, resolution page three, number two under the whereas, but that was the old one.
It wasn't any physical changes to the interior of the building?
Those, yeah.
Yeah. So I believe that that was because, you know, when you have a building divided into three suites, that's one thing. But I, I think that it was crafted that way because the neighbors were concerned, you can take a building, you can divide it into 12 small suites and you end up maybe having a problem. So they didn't want the building further subdivided without the planning commission reviewing what the subdivision's purpose was. They felt that that would still need a review. You know, the bicycle museum, hopefully it'll be there forever, but you never know. The kitchen might not be there forever, you know, the commercial kitchen. So they were, they were looking at further subdivision, you know, dividing, further chopping up of the interior of the building.
Partitioning.
Partitioning. Thank you.
So if that were to occur later-
They would have to come-
Sorry.
Yeah, they would have to come back to the planning commission and run it by you and indicate why they're doing it, what the purpose of the subdivision, further subdivision is. And we'd have to reanalyze the parking, you know? Different uses require different amounts of parking, generate different amounts of traffic.
So on number six where it says will require any physical changes to the interior of the building, that changes the number of suites, where adds additional square footage to the structure will require prior approval of a modification to the conditional use permit?
Mm-hmm.
Would come here?
Right.
That's what, because it wasn't-
Right.
Okay.
So I guess I saw this as an application for the museum and somehow the bakery kind of got merged into it. So I kind of got a bit of confusion happening with that. When I looked at the resolutions on the bakery, those seemed to be clear that it was a classroom and a workshop and education. So I kind of wanted to kind of disaggregate them. In my mind, on the museum regarding condition three, I wanted to give the hours of operation flexibility. And when it said daily from 11 on the modified, I kind of wanted to say, ask you, what are the commercial hours for commercial businesses in downtown? Can they open from 8:00 to 10:00 PM or what is that range?
You know, it all depends on the business. Most of them I think open at like nine or 10 and a lot of them close at 5, but the restaurants, you know, they don't open till the evening.
Okay.
But there's nothing in the code that, that says there's any, it doesn't set any parameters in the town code.
Okay.
So usually the commission will look at the, how close the residential houses are and-
Right.
That's kind of what they use as a guide for trying to set the hours.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, I didn't hear some specific museum hours from the curator, so I'm not going to suggest changes to what staff's proposed here. I think that the only other thing that I would want to suggest is on condition four and six, where they may want to expand even further or do some other changes that enhance the museum, that, that should be a staff level approval, that you compare to the ITE manual, that if, as long as they stay within the 100 ADT trips, that you have authority to approve that modification. I don't necessarily think they should have to come back here to us for minor things like this. I think that you know well enough that if it was something that triggers something of concern to the neighborhood, then you have authority to refer it back to the planning commission, such as changing, which I didn't even think of as affiliated with this application, but the bakery from a classroom workshop, education to a restaurant, then that might even affect how the museum can operate and what they might need in terms of parking or whatever space. So I, I'm, since I don't have hour changes from the curator, that would be the only other suggested changes, condition four and six. And I have specific language changes if other planning commissioners agreed with me.
Well, I, I kind of heard from the curator, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that they do have classrooms, classes come. So I think we should maybe change it to when schools open, like 8:00, 8:00 AM if it's a classroom event.
Or 9:00 if there's any concern about making sure it stays outside of peak traffic periods. But yes, certainly 11:00 AM is-
Kind of late.
Yeah.
When you have classes come, do they normally come like 9:00 o'clock or later?
Is this a question we should have asked during the public hearing, Cindy?
Yes, it is.
So I'm sorry, I'd have to reopen the public hearing. I know I have precedent. I've done that before, haven't I? All right, just this once, never again though.
Thank you, Chair.
Is that it? Okay.
Kids, when the schools come, what time do they usually come? Like, do they ever come before 9? No.
Well, I don't recall that. But I think what we were talking about as far as the, the time changes, it was to be up to seven days a week and 9:00 to 7:00 PM, I think is what you stated, Linda. And I think is what we had talked about.
So they're good with that.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to close that public hearing for good now. All right. Any other thoughts people want to share? How about from this side of the table?
I have thoughts. You know, I agree with the change of business hours, 9:00 to 7:00, Monday through, you know, the whole seven days a week. I think that that would give them flexibility. But I had a question about the bakery or food preparation, or maybe it's a comment. Because I'm thinking about baker's hours.
I know, but you know what?
And-
That's, that was what the owner told me. He was wrong. There is no bakery using that space.
Okay.
They were, she was, Miyoko was trying to enter into, I thought, I thought I sent that in my email, but Miyoko was trying to sublet to a bakery. It fell apart. So it's not a bakery. And in the revised staff report, I changed that to wholesale food preparation, commercial kitchen, because we don't really know what's going to go in there.
What's going to go in there.
Right now, she's negotiating with someone who makes ice cream.
Okay. So she is still the leasee.
For a year, for another year.
But she's not physically there anymore.
Right.
Okay. And so she's looking for a sublet.
Right.
Sub-leasee.
And the owner indicated to me that most likely because of the amount of improvements that have gone into that backspace, it will stay some kind of use that needs a commercial kitchen. And they're really not set up, it would, it would take a lot of remodeling to try to change it into any kind of a restaurant or even some kind of, anything with like a retail frontage.
Okay.
It's really probably going to stay a commercial kitchen.
Okay. So the 6:00 start to time is kind of just a general, people that prepare food get to work earlier.
Bakers start at 4:00.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was thinking, so I was confused. But, okay, so that's, that's fair. And so 6:00 and then, but deliveries don't occur before 8:00. Is that correct?
That's, well, that's one of the conditions because the neighbors were adamant that they do not want, you know, that, that's the space that backs up the most to the, to the residential.
Right.
And the delivery vehicles are a problem when they back, when it's right next to a residential neighborhood, that when they come too early.
Because of the sound?
Yes.
The beeping?
The beeping. They, they don't turn their engines off, you know, when they're waiting, they run their engines and it's-
Okay. Okay, those are my comments.
Thanks. Anyone else?
So on the commercial kitchen, when that is subleased- So on the commercial kitchen, when that is subleased, that's sub-lease or, will have different parking requirements than.
I don't believe so, because the space kind of limits the number of people. So, so Mioko's had two of the suites, and they had all kinds of stuff going on. And they had, I don't know, what did it say, 20, 26 employees? But I think it, you know, they might have one or two employees over the eight, but I really don't think so, just because the space is just not that large. But that's why we included the condition that, let's say, some kitchen use, I can't imagine, crams 24 employees in there for some reason on their busiest shift, and does kick them into the traffic impact permit, or does kick them into needing a variance, you know, they'll, they'll be back in front of you.
Well, and I was thinking, just because we've changed the parking breakdown to allow the museum more parking spaces on here than the way it was previously. So, so when, which is fine, but when a commercial restaurant, I mean, a kit, the kitchen is utilized, whoever utilizes that would have less space than the prior, because we've kind of changed the breakdown on here.
Yeah, are any of the spaces out there marked?
Linda, what are you doing?
Oh, sorry. I don't believe any of the spaces are marked. And so when I, when we looked at that parking lot, we were just looking at, at it as the overall number of spaces for the businesses that are in there. We aren't assigning them, I know the Bicycle Museum indicated in their letter that they're going to have more spaces because they're taking over two spaces, but they really share the parking lot. And there's nobody out there, you know, telling someone, hey, you're in a bicycle spot, you need to move over. So I'm not that worried about it. But if it becomes a problem, it's a use permit, so we can bring it back.
If there were three units and 27, did we say 27 spaces? Can you divide those up?
Well, but the different uses based on the parking ordinance require different levels of parking, you know. So the bakery use is based on number of employees on the busiest shift. You have to have one space for every two employees. The museum use is based on square footage. You need a certain number of parking spaces per square footage. And so the whole parking ordinance is like that. It's, it's not just a straight, the square footage, you know, some of it's based on number of employees.
And that's job security for you, right?
Yeah, because nobody else can understand it.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Just, just a comment that I think we should approve this resolution.
How about a motion, Phil?
Could, oh, before we have a motion, Michelle had suggested some flexibility for staff, allowing them to make some, some determinations for minimal uses that didn't surpass the existing envelope of what's approved. Could we add that to the motion as a friendly? Well, we don't have a motion yet, but do we have agreement that we could add that?
I think you'd have to be more specific for me.
Okay, I move approval of, where are we? I'm sorry, I lost it. I was reading something else. I move approval of resolution number 201806 with the caveat mentioned by the commissioner that we provide some flexibility to staff to make minor adjustments. Two particular hours or uses. No, that staff, that Fairfax Town staff.
You know, you could just include, can I make a suggestion? You could just include under number three, you could include like a G that might, like you could just say something like, minor changes to the hours shall be subject, can be approved by the planning director, or something like that. Yeah.
That are, that are in conformance.
That are in keeping with the mixed use, the mixed use approval, or something like that.
Yes.
Would that work for you guys, something like that?
So would you also include then, because in item six, it talks about any physical changes to the interior of the building that changes the number of suites. So would you, I mean, if the building owner came and wanted to change in the future that to maybe more suites for that, would you be okay with a?
No, I think we should keep number six.
Right, because, because that idea was because of the original concern of neighbors, and, and I think that one. But I'm, I'm not so sure about G, minor changes to hours and uses. The uses part, I'm not, I'm not clear on. I don't mind, I mean, I think, I think staff can do an administrative, you know, review or permitting of changes to hours, so they're not constantly technically in violation of the permit. But to change uses throws a lot of question marks out.
Well, well, remember that we all, maybe, maybe this will help you, Norma. Remember that we added condition two, where we changed the uses to real general descriptions. So we're no longer approving just the museum, just Mioko's kitchen, right? We're, we're using general museum, retail, personal service businesses are permitted. So that gives staff the pl, the flexibility to.
Because the other piece of that is changing the hours. If, I would be concerned with staff taking those hours and enlarging the hours without coming before us.
All right, then let's just approve the resolution as it stands.
Can I ask a clarification, though? Because I thought we were talking about changing 3A to 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Well, so that's what I'm asking. Isn't that what we agreed to? So it would have a minor change, Norma? Are you not? Who is not? Can you be?
I, I would agree that staff should have the purview to revise the hours within their discretion and their knowledge of the neighborhood.
That's not what I'm asking you. I'm asking you on 3A, if we change the hours to 9:00 to give the applicants the flexibility any day of the week to open it earlier than 11:00, which is what it currently says.
I think that's fine.
I'll second that motion.
Well, I don't think we've had a motion, Michelle, frankly, so hold off.
I did move.
She did.
I did move.
All right, so you move with.
With that caveat.
Okay, so moved by Commissioner Fregoso, and you're seconding it. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So unanimously approved, and there is a 10-day appeal period and a $500 fee for anyone who wants to appeal. Thank you very much, and good luck.
And, yeah, go teach those kids about Major Taylor. I see that in your events. That's, that's what you, you got to get that out there.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you, guys, for getting us through that one. And we're going to go on to number five, which is accessory dwelling unit and junior accessory dwelling unit regs, because it's only 10 minutes to 10:00. And so Planning Director Berto is going to tell us about this one.
Yes. The legislature is in a very active mode to do with anything housing related, and along those lines, they have continued to modify the state code pertaining to accessory dwelling units. Staff and town attorney consider these relatively minor. However, insofar as there's some other provision that says any deviation from state code renders your local ordinance as null and void, excuse me, the idea is to just make those changes in a timely manner, so that it is consistent with state code. And we feel that if there are any minor wording changes between this and the state code, that the intent is sufficiently close, that there is nothing to worry about. There is one potential clarification, which is on page two of the, of the attachment B, that at the top there, so under 174806OB, there's a question about whether that language isn't sufficiently clear to indicate that both units may not be rented, although the one above it says that either the primary residence or the accessory dwelling unit shall be owner occupied. But if the commission desires, we could recommend adjusting that language to read either the accessory dwelling unit or the primary residence may be rented but not both, and then continue with the language, and shall only be rented for a term of 30 days or more. So that, that's the only potential recommended adjustment to this. And if you have any questions, I'm ready to answer them.
Okay, Norma, do you have a question?
That was not clear to me. Are you saying that one or the other must be owner occupied? And the one that's owner occupied could only be rented for 30 days?
No, no, what we're saying is that, that language in B does not sufficiently clarify that both can't be rented. It, it could be construed to say, the unit may be rented separately from the primary residence, you know, reading between the lines. So you can rent both of them. You can rent them separately, but really, you can't. You can only rent one of those units. So this would simply technically clarify that nobody can rent both of them. Although I would note that another state legislative proposal is to allow people, or to eliminate the owner occupancy requirement, which this staff person thinks is a mistake, but anyway.
I would agree with you that that's a mistake. And I'm not sure if B says what you just said, but I agree with what you just said.
I point a clar, a question for clarification, if I might, in, in that same section where the F maximum size, total floor space shall not exceed 50% of the proposed or existing primary dwelling living area, or 1,200 square feet. I mean, so is it whatever is less?
Right.
So I think we want to add that.
Any other questions for staff, Michelle?
On LC, regarding parking, I thought there was a state exception that if you were a certain distance from some level of public transportation, that even if they converted the garage to an accessory dwelling unit, that they did not have to replace parking.
I know that they're, they're not required to provide parking, but this language was crafted by the town attorney, so.
Okay, so I won't worry about it. On F1, that proposed, the total floor area shall not exceed 50% of the proposed, so this is in circumstances where they're proposing to build a residential structure and a second dwelling unit structure, and somehow you just make sure that they're doing both, and that they complete one first and then do the accessory building, or?
Well, it's simply that the state language lacks the term proposed. And so this is to clarify that somebody can come in with a new residence with a new ADU simultaneously. So it allows for both.
Okay. And we can't require affordability, like relating back to our housing element, that a certain percentage, that some, somehow we're linking it to very low income or something? Or there's no way to do that?
Under our current code, we can't, this is a topic where, you know, conversations include requirements for affordability for ADUs, which isn't prohibited under state law as it currently exists. Another way where the town to go that direction is to limit the size, because it's been observed that the ones, the ADs that tend to be affordable are the smaller ones. So, but right now, we're not doing that.
But we can't limit it further than 50% of the resident, oh, but by reducing the 3,000 square feet, is that what you're saying?
Well, the, the conversation would go beyond the scope of this evening's discussion, but just find ways to incentivize or direct smaller ADUs. I mean, for example, well, you know, if it's, if it's more than a certain square footage, it would have to be low income or meet, you know, something like that. And if it's below it, you just let it float.
I think the only other option would be to establish an, an inclusionary housing requirement of some sort. That could, that could be tough.
Cindy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I agree, the language about the owner occupied and the rental needs to be changed, because it is not clear from paragraph A to B. So I would recommend that get reworded. And then the other item is where within some of the paragraphs, it talks about proposed structure, or for the, the total floor space shall not exceed 50% of the proposed or existing primary dwelling, living, continued. We're not consistent with that, with the proposed. We've created, I mean, we've approved ADUs on lots that don't have a house on them. So we've, you know, we've already gone ahead and done things like that. There is that one on Wood Lane that, they came in with a building, and I think part of the plans included an ADU. But going back to, we have 1704806C, which kind of speaks to that in our code already. It says development on a lot, a single family dwelling or duplex must exist on a lot or will be constructed in conjunction. So that, to me, is, unless I'm misreading it, is kind of the overriding piece of this, that in our ordinance that talks about, you know, we're applying these to lots that already have homes that want to do an ADU, or lots that don't have anything, and the people are coming in with plans to put a house and an ADU on it. So that's kind of an overarching for everything within our ADU code speaks to either existing or proposed. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
So if I can just ask you a question, Cindy. So what your point is, is we need to be consistent throughout these ordinances in our use of these terms when we're referencing the proposed and existing residences.
I think when, when we use the term proposed in sections, but we don't use it throughout, I think that brings up questions. And within our, and I know a lot of what was done here was taking the language out of the new government code and just kind of slap, and, you know, putting it in there. But as far as the proposed piece, you know, we already do this, and we already have a section in our code that speaks to existing or, or to be constructed. So I think that's simpler. That was my comment.
Okay, thanks. Do you guys have questions for Cindy? No. You understand what we're saying here?
You want us to use the language to be constructed instead of proposed? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is, is that section C kind of addresses, to me, and maybe I'm misreading it, it, for the whole code, it talks about, you know, a dwelling that, a single family dwelling that may be there, that won't. that wants to add on an ADU. Or where you have a lot that they're coming in and proposing a single family residence and an ADU. So we're already talking in there in that section about proposed structures. And so having proposed in pieces of this, but not all of it, with the changes that are being made can lead to a little bit more confusion.
Well, I think that the intent is to actually clarify it. And what happens, I think, sometimes is people will glom onto one particular thing and say, well, wait a minute. It doesn't say that it can be a proposed unit. I realize it's in the separate section. But it's similar to A and B where A is simply saying that either the primary residence or dwelling shall be owner occupied, so ergo.
Right. But our A and B that we have now isn't clear.
Well, this is what's proposed, though. I mean, that language is to remain unchanged under A. So it's just making it what should be fairly clear. As you note under C, it pretty much spells it out. I guess the question is, is there any harm in doing it? I don't feel that the recommendations are problematic in that regard. I think that B, the language, and then the item that Phil noted, Commissioner Green, excuse me, noted, do provide additional clarity. But again, we're dealing with really small changes. So either way, whatever the commission's preference is, I'm sure will be fine.
You know what? Sometimes the addition of an and or an or can make all the difference in the world to a jury. And you don't, yeah, if we all had judge trials, it would be one thing. But we don't. A couple other clarification points in that regard is under K, sanitary service requirements, where it says if an existing private septic system is to be utilized as a condition, I would add, as a condition to the ADU permit, the applicant must provide, et cetera. And the only other one-word clarification I have is in C, 048-060, 17048-060C, capital C in parentheses. At the end of that, accessory dwelling units are not allowed in conjunction with perhaps any multiple residential development? Would that clarify or would that hurt? I'm not sure, but that was just a thought I had.
Just to add the word any?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's another one that that limitation is something that the state is proposing to scrub. Just FYI.
Other thoughts from commissioners?
Actually, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm looking at the utilities part. So I'm looking at the staff report. And I'm not sure I understand the staff report. I'm looking at page two. And it talks about another key change. The limitations on water and sewer service connection fees and capacity charges pertains to the requirements of those utilities rather than the town. I'm wondering if that's the same thing as, what is that, O? Which section is that? ABCD, O. It's section 2O. Utilities, utility service for sewer, water, electricity, and gas, if necessary, shall be provided to the accessory dwelling unit. So I'm not sure if that's addressing two separate things. But back to the staff report, I just, my note says explain. What does this mean? That the requirements of the utilities are not the responsibility of the town? So it's just saying that it's the property owner's responsibility to provide those hookups or?
Yeah, what's going, I think in the staff report, the idea was that we're simply pointing out that even though there's a mention about utilities, it's not the town's bailiwick, our purview. That is up to the utilities. And point of fact, we're working. Yes. So that was the attempt, was to simply say utility requirements, go to the utilities and sort that out. It's an interesting question because the legislature, once again, is attempting to curtail utilities' ability to charge hookups. And we're in the process of sorting that out because obviously that's a multi-thousand-dollar question. MMWD does have a preliminary brochure. And there's some efforts to try to clarify how that would be applied in informational documents we'd provide to the public. So utilities, it's a very interesting question.
But that's not being addressed here in this resolution. It's just, we're not touching that right now. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. The, let's see. I don't have a lot of comments on this one, but. Hold, stay with me for a second. In, this is page two of the resolution 17048-060. Well, it comes up in F1, but it also comes up in F2. Total area of floor space. Now, that is not maximum residential square foot limit, is it? I don't know what that means in relationship to maximum residential square foot limit, which is my new favorite term. And I would like some explanation of total area of floor space in relationship to my new favorite term.
I wish I could say that I caught that and discussed it. I know exactly the question there because typically floor space means space on the floor. Whereas typically when jurisdictions measure square footage or floor area or your favorite term, we're going to exterior wall. So it's an interesting question. I don't have the answer to that tonight. But I would have, I will have that resolved when we take it to the, to the.
I think I saw it in the legislation. So let me look for that because that language is right out of that. So let me see if I can find.
Yeah, let's see if we have a definition here. Yeah, I don't think we do either. I will say this, we're talking about a matter of inches. You know, what's a wall with six inches? So.
Well, I want to know things like, does it include chicken coops? No, I'm serious. I mean. So, right, we're thinking that our maximum square, what is it, maximum residential square foot limit currently would include accessory structures in the calculation of the 5,000 that we currently have on the books, right? So does the total area floor space include the area of the chicken coop?
No, insofar as we're exempting that from our.
We're thinking of talking about exempting that. I'm asking about right now because this is going to go up before we finish with what we're doing. So I'm just trying to understand the current lay of the land. Cluck, cluck.
Yeah. Insofar as the intent of the legislature was not to provide housing for chickens, that would be counted as, it would be included in our limits if it were a chicken coop.
Included in our 5,000 square foot limit residential, maximum residential square foot limit that we currently have on our books?
Yes.
Okay. But not necessarily pending Cindy confirming the definition of floor space area in what the state is talking about.
The state is talking about people's space, not poultry or storage or.
So the state is kind of talking about what we were talking about earlier this evening, which is habitable space. Is that the distinction that we think?
So here, it is in the government code. And it's earlier in the code. It refers to the language that staff has put in here as floor space. But then under the definition, it says the following terms mean, and it doesn't include the floor space, but it says living area means the interior habitable area of a dwelling unit, including basements and attics, but does not include a garage or accessory structure.
So, so we would have, because.
Including basement? Ha, ha, ha.
So it was living space that I saw as the definition in here. We do have to look for floor space definition because I just found the living space, not floor space, so.
What section was Michelle reading from? But what section of the law?
Government Code 658-52.2. And it is I1, but I'd have to get you down there.
Can I add to that? Because when basement and attic is included in floor area, it's because it's habitable because it's at least seven feet high. Otherwise, it's crawl space or dead attic space. So it would, so yes, you can have a basement that has a family room, correct? And you would count that. But it has to satisfy a bunch of other, yes, it has to be livable. You can't, you know, create another bedroom or a family room that's four feet high or five feet high. It has to be seven feet high by code.
Livable by humans.
Well, maybe the best thing to do with that, with that issue is to somewhere in that F1, say whatever the word is, living space or floor space, if it happens to be that, as defined by or as mentioned in government code section, whatever it is. Maybe, and then we're safe, you know, because then it's on the state to come up with a definition, which no doubt the Supreme Court will do one day.
We're safe until we start trying to parse out what that means in relation to our own ordinances that deal with maximum residential square footage limits.
I, I think we could come up with some clarification. But as Commissioner Green notes, whenever you're looking at what the state's saying it is, to try to define it in your own code means the next time they change that. So we'll have to consider how we do that. But it's an excellent catch. I mean, you know, interior conditioned area versus exterior wall to exterior wall. There's a few square foot, feet there, not much fortunately, but it is a difference.
But I think, you know, I'm curious as well to know how the state defines it in relation to this floor space. But within our code, we already have kind of that generic statement that says, you know, we're referencing back to the government code.
Right. So I think we can assume that the two terms are synonymous. It's just, once again, it'd be nice if they just used one term and left it at that.
You know what they say about assumptions.
Amen.
But what two terms? You're saying floor space area?
Living space versus floor space. Well, this, I think there was a floor space reference, right? It wasn't necessarily floor area, but. Floor space.
Floor space area.
Yeah. This, yeah, we're, this is not going to be fun if we're wrestling with four terms or more, but.
Oh, this is the definition of fun, Ben. What are you talking about?
We'll get through it, though. I promise you, we will have it defined. Because that's one of the things you do is you just define it and then somebody has a question, we say, okay, it's interior wall, it's conditioned, it's this, it's that. And if it has to be special for ADUs, it'll be special for ADUs because that's what the state says you have to do.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments, questions, poems?
Poems, yes. Long time ago, when the ADU law came into effect last year, I guess it was. And there was a legal analysis by our town attorney who went through the ADU law and said, here's what we can do to kind of, there's little bits and pieces that we can control that isn't, you know, that aren't in the law. Overall, does this reflect that idea? That there's little bits and pieces that we can do to control here? And they're in here? Because I don't remember all the little bits and pieces what they are, but.
I can tell you this, that.
Or has that been straddled by the state and we can't do that anymore?
I think the real thrust was to be completely consistent with state law. I mean, we've had discussions about what Fairfax could or couldn't do. But I know from a conservative legal standpoint, you better have some pretty good reasons why you retain any local adjustments, especially in light of what the state's clearly articulated intent is in that regard.
We had those, and I think they're still in here unless there was something related to parking. But one of them was rentals. So that was one, and that's still in here. I think the state allowed renting any length of time and, but gave us the flexibility to limit it to over 30 days. So we did that so that we, because we had the discussion of like B to B kind of rentals. And we didn't want an ADU to turn into one of those. So we had the limitation that the rental had to be over 30 days. And that's still in here. And that is still something that we could control.
Okay, yeah. So that's a good example of that, then.
Any other thoughts or comments? Do we have anybody wanting to make a motion here?
I'll make that motion. Oh, I got to make it first. I'm making a motion to adopt attachment B, which is an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, as proposed by staff and with the following exceptions.
Michelle, I'm going to interrupt you. Can you reference attachment A instead of attachment B? Attachment A references attachment B, right?
Very good. So going, let me start. So my motion is regarding the May 17, 2018, Planning Commission staff report, adoption of attachment A, which is resolution number 2018-07 of the Planning Commission, recommended to the Town Council approval of the ordinance amending chapter 17.048 regarding accessory dwelling units. Modifying proposed attachment B, which is that ordinance, as follows. Modifying item B rental to read, "The unit shall not be sold separately from the primary residence." Period. "The unit may be rented for terms of 30 days or less."
Now, I think you might be reading from, wow, now I'm confused. I thought we were saying that the additional language would be, "The unit shall not be sold separately from the primary residence." "The unit may be rented separately from the primary residence and shall only be rented for terms of 30 days or more." But there was like some but not both language.
Either the unit or the primary residence may be rented, but not both, and shall only be rented for a term of more than 30 days.
So I'll rescind my motion because I'm.
Okay. So, I'll rescind my motion, because I'm not getting it right.
So, the "but not both" language goes after the word rented before the word separately.
Yeah, but he's adding either...
It's kind of helpful, that's like, they can't be rented at the same time, right?
Well...
I mean, the owners could, the ADU would rent out their house.
Right, but, I mean, that's, it's understood. You can rent one or the other. You can't do both.
So, I'll just, Michelle, I don't want you to rescind. I just want to be able to edit you as you go. So, I was thinking you would say, now that Ben has clarified it, "The unit shall not be sold separately from the primary residence, period. Either the unit may be rented separate, either the unit or the primary residence may be rented separately, but not both, and shall only be rented for terms of 30 days or more." And then I think you were going to add an "any" in C before the last sentence, say, "Accessory dwelling units are not allowed in conjunction with any multiple residential development." And then in F-1, "The total area of floor space shall not exceed 50% of the proposed or existing primary dwelling living area or 1,200 square feet, whichever is less." And then in K, "If an existing private septic system is to be utilized as a condition to the ADU permit, the applicant must provide written confirmation, blah, blah, blah." And is that it? I think that might be it.
I'll second your motion, Michelle.
Are you standing by it, Michelle? You can rescind, you can just kind of get up and walk away in a huff.
I understood the changes, and I'll retract my rescension, except your second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed unanimously? Yay. Now, we have one other thing. We have minutes. And I noticed that...
We have a director's report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I skipping over things? I don't know. I'm just trying to jump. Where is my agenda?
Here.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry. Planning Director's Report. You've had a lot of air space, but go ahead.
I will be very brief. The Town Council was not able to hear the proposed work program at their May meeting, but hopefully they will schedule it early in their agenda. It just got bumped because too many of their long items were in front of it. But hopefully they will be considering that at their June 6 meeting. So, I will report back to the Commission any information that I have from that. And I've been to a couple of Planning Directors' conferences, and for the commissioners that attended the Planning Commission Training Academy, you know, the news just keeps rolling in, is more and more housing bills. It's a great time to be a developer, is all I can say. Yeah, based on, you know, state legislation and the intent. There will be a presentation by council at the, at the June 6 meeting on the legislation. So, I would encourage you to watch it on webcast, or if not, sit in the audience. I think that'll be a good overview. As I said, I don't think there's too many surprises for the commissioners that were at the Planning Commissioners Academy, but it just provides an overview of what the political landscape is in the state right now. That's it.
Thank you. Gosh, I think there was less than a minute. Go ahead.
Can you give an update, since you're doing it periodically anyway, on Java Hut? Then also, at the last meeting, there was a question concerning 85 Bellinas Road, so if you can give an update on that. And then, is there a May 30 council?
Yes.
So, can you speak to that? Thanks.
Okay. The, in order, Java Hut is days away from opening. We've kind of gone around on the, the language and the signage, but they, it's just a question of fabricating the sign and attaching it to the chain so that people know that they're not supposed to sit in the outdoor area when the good earth is not open. In terms of 85 Bellinas, Lyndon knows more details about it, but I think I can just summarize it to say that there's been a change in ownership, and that the assumptions regarding occupancy and, you know, getting that place occupied consistent with the prior approvals is very much in the air, up in the air. So, if there are changes proposed, that will probably have to come back to the Planning Commission.
Are you saying the whole building changed ownership, or just the business?
Take the whole.
So, the owner, the owner passed away. The wife is now in possession of the property. She fired the old property manager. Agreements that he had entered into with tenants, she is no longer honoring. They weren't in writing. And she does not want to provide insurance for a restaurant, which apparently is higher than something else. And so, they're having trouble trying to get the restaurant open. And it's going to be very expensive to try to redo the plumbing and everything. So, they will be back in front of you. They, they aren't going to, going to be able to implement their use permit the way they presented it to you. So...
Sorry, what use was that? I don't know that address.
It was, it was, it's the octagonal building. Anyway, it's, it's like a kind of, some kind of a health clinic where they provide vitamin B shots, and they sell supplements, and they have classes on, you know, how to improve your health, and there's a...
Casa Manana was there.
Yeah, it's where Casa Manana, the little Mexican restaurant was.
Across from the park.
So, and they were taking over all of the front suites, you know, and they had this grand scheme that they said was going to be wonderful, but they haven't been able to get it going, so...
Did you put in a nice retaining wall, open by the range of trees?
Yeah, that, that was actually the property owner. That wasn't this tenant. You know, that was the owner that put that in, but anyway.
And May 30?
Yes, May 30. The council is scheduled to have a presentation and workshop on municipal cannabis with a consultant who specializes in governance issues relating to cannabis topics. So, we'll see what arises out of that. It's just basically that person talking about options for the town.
During the council meeting?
This is a special workshop.
What time is that?
I believe it's 7:00 or 7:30. It's an evening workshop.
Is it going to be televised? Do you know?
I do not know that question.
So, initially, that was talked about as a possible joint meeting, so they're just doing it as a...
Yes, oh, excuse me. Yes, let me clarify that. It will be noticed on the grounds, although you will not be up in the rostrum, so that there wouldn't be a question about Brown Act compliance. You know, some of these things can get very nitpicky. The idea is if a quorum of the Planning Commission desire ends up being in attendance that night, it would be noticed so that there weren't, there wasn't a potential Brown Act violation question.
I mean, I would like to recommend that the Chair of the Planning Commission call the mayor to speak about this, because what's going to happen is that we're going to get behind in what information that they're getting. If we're not present in learning all at the same time, we're going to be directed to initiate something that we're not going to have a clue about what's kind of going on. And it's a little odd the way this is happening, is kind of my opinion.
I need a little bit more clarification, Michelle. So, you're, I mean, what I'm hearing is we're being asked to come to the workshop, right?
Yes. The invitation is out there. There's no problem if you want to attend. So, if you have time, I would encourage you to do so. I think, was your comment related more to the fact that the council continues to discuss this?
Well, I think the difference in what I'm hearing, just a slight nuance, is, well, they're going to advertise it in case we attend. So, we're going to be sitting out there if we attend, and I'm not really clear. Does that mean that we're not supposed to give input at that time, because we're just in the audience? Whereas, what I'm saying is, I'm not clear what this format is about. Does that mean then that they're going to then discuss amongst themselves the direction that they're going to give to the Planning Commission, and we will get that in minute order? Or, if some of us aren't there, and they're being taught about options, and we don't get an opportunity to even give input into that, I'm just, I feel like it's, the Land Use Authority sits with the Planning Commission, and that I'm just not clear how this is...
Can you explain a little bit as to how, what the workshop is about, and maybe that would help, as far as bringing in the individual that they're, they're bringing in, and the purpose of that?
Well, I, I don't know the details of that. In fact, I was going to send that person a list of questions or issues that I feel are relevant to Fairfax. But as your commission is probably aware, the council has already provided certain parameters about the different categories of use that are described under the state legislation pertaining to legal cannabis. So, in terms of, they don't want manufacturing, for example. So, what he will do is provide more information about options that are available to the town within the scope of what they have indicated interest in, for example, potentially recreational cannabis sales, some of the financing aspects, things of that nature. I should, I should have more information, and I can certainly pass that on to the Planning Commission. But regarding, in terms of the information, the Planning Commission is still in a, I would say, in a mode of awaiting direction from the Town Council on what areas to work on. So, it's certainly something I would recommend attendance and monitoring. I don't think there's a problem asking questions. I would be, I would probably advise that, you know, it's, it's the, really the Town Council show, and so if you have questions, great. Otherwise, you know, just get informed, and, and when we do take up the item, you know, we will, at that point, be making recommendations on all of the land use-related aspects of our governance.
And what's the format? I mean, is this a presentation, or, I mean, when I think a workshop, I think of people rolling up their sleeves and kind of jumping into issues and talking and brainstorming. But it almost sounds to me like it's a presentation, and the council may be sitting up here on the dais, listening to the presentation, and then they'll talk, maybe they'll open it up for some public comment, but that they'll then kind of engage in the kind of discussion that they normally do during a council meeting? Is that the way you think it would play out?
Something similar to that, yes. I mean, of course, in Fairfax, everything's a public meeting, and so the...
Well, we do things in different ways, depending on how we advertise it and what the setup is. And sometimes it doesn't work out the way we thought it was going to, you know, and we get more public participation than we planned. But, you know, to some of the comments that we heard earlier, like when you were asking Phil earlier this evening, where was the smaller house size coming from? And, and, you know, like you're saying, this is the Town Council's party. This is, you know, when I went to the, my first, when I went to get appointed to this council, the council, this commission, the council was very clear with me. I mean, I think David Winesoff kind of lectured me on, you do not impose your own sense of what the right thing to do is. If the council has given you direction, you march out and undertake those directions from the council. We're appointed, they're elected, and that, you know, so like on your question, where does the smaller house size come from? You know, who cares? We need to move forward with that in a way, because the Town Council's directed us to do that. That's their bottom line. So, on this one, I kind of feel like the same way. If we are going to be sitting there, I like the fact that it's going to be Brown Act notified, because that means when I'm making faces in the audience, I'm not being like illegal, you know? So, that's good, because we can go, and they'll hear that, right? Okay, other thoughts? All right. Now, we can go to the minutes, I think. And I did have a comment on the first page of the minutes. I'm listed twice, and Michelle is listed in all in the approval Does anybody else have comments on minutes?
I had, I was kind of confused on, I wasn't at the meeting last time, and then when you guys approved the meeting of the March 5, the minutes for the March 15 meeting, it said that I voted aye, and Esther was absent, but I don't know if it was because the March 15, she was absent. So, I was like totally confused as to what was the, you know, the intent there. So, anyway.
I, I have a, I guess, a correction on page seven. One to the third bullet down. It says, this is, this is regarding the fire sprinkler requirement for 26 Cloud Circle. It says, she is conflicted about the fire sprinkler issue. It should say, this is an example, this project is an example of, or it should say, she, she does not agree that the fire sprinklers should be required on this project. This is an example of that.
Any other comments on the minutes?
Just that, again, they're, they're better than I can, I can imagine they could be. I think they're pretty good overall.
Is that your preface to your motion?
And so, I therefore move to approve the minutes as corrected or commented on.
Great. Do we have a second?
I second.
I think Esther beat you there, Cindy. Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Green, and a second from Commissioner Gonzalez Parver. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm abstaining.
And Commissioner Caroline is abstaining, and we have no nays, so it's unanimously approved. And I'm going to move to Commissioner comments and requests. I, I have a request. I know that you guys didn't go get to the work, or the council didn't get to kind of reviewing our works program and our recommendations for the things that we prioritized. And I don't want to put more on your plates than you can handle. But I think this may be, there may be ways that you guys can, you know, be incentivized to move forward with certain streamlining recommendations that would make your own lives easier. certain streamlining recommendations that would make your own lives easier, and if you have the wherewithal, to put something together for June that is a recommendation in addition to all this other stuff that you guys have on your plate. By all means, go for it. And I think with that, we can adjourn for the evening.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.